Forget you.
Yeah, we're ready.
Welcome all. Is it too late to say Happy New Year, too late in January?
It is.
Happy New Year. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have Commissioner Pash on the phone. Thank you for joining us. We're gonna hope and keep our fingers crossed that you can... Uh-oh. We're gonna call a little timeout here.
Curry County Board of Commissioners Office.
Hi, this is Commissioner Pash trying to get through to the Board Office. I got this connected.
You're in the meeting room, sir, live.
Stay diligent. So introductions here. We have Commissioner Gold, we have Commissioner Pash on the phone, County Council John Huddle, Superglue John Jesuit Staff, Director Schmelzer. My name is Court Boyce, Commissioner. In the audience, I want to recognize Sheriff John Ward, his deputy DJ Storms, Joel Hensley, County Clerk and County Deputy Clerk Renee Cullen and Shelley Denny. I don't think... And Julie Swift is also in the office. Thank you all for being here.
Captain.
Editor. Who did I forget?
Captain McDonald?
Yeah, man.
Oh, I missed you, Captain McDonald. I'm sorry. I did not see you. You gotta stand up. And then Director of Economic Development Summer Madison. So thank you all very much for being here. Did I forget anyone? So I don't... I was talking to Staff Jesuit. I don't have a line of duty to have to report today for the military, our fallen heroes, our law enforcement officials, and also our first responders, firefighters. So I want to take just a couple minutes here today. We're gonna see a video with Commissioner Pash here in a little bit. If we go back just three years, to last week, the opening meeting, I had 24 hours to prepare for a city that was going to try and help the county in running our BAC office. And that met with a lot of resistance. I think the heart behind the effort was good, but it wasn't the right timing for Curry County. Since then, that two years was a rough two years. I've had many friends go over a lot of videos and think that the dysfunction and even the bullying was a little bit tough. But this last year has been an absolute effort and a series of accomplishments that I'm very proud to say that we've all been a part of. And, you know, in looking at some of those videos, I know, Commissioner Gold, that my response sometimes hasn't been the best, but I will apologize to you. And I couldn't look more forward to engaging you and challenging you and asking you to challenge me as we move forward. This is a very, very critical time for Curry County. There's some tremendous opportunities, and I'm going forward with a lot of optimism. And I'm very proud of what this board has accomplished. We've laid some good foundations, but we have a lot of work to do. And I'll just conclude with no excuses, but when you look at the courthouse security that we've had to deal with, the phone system, the towers, you know, the list is... It's pretty strong. And so I want to pull them up here. I mentioned the phones. It disappeared. My phone... My computer was working pretty good there. Give me one more minute. Oh, the heating and air conditioning, the audit that we're very anxious to start immediately, the strategic plan, we spent $5,000 on that, so we're hoping all of this is going to bring some big, long-term progress for the county. So moving on to the agenda. Do we want to approve the agenda? Do we have any amendments? Commissioner Gold, please.
I would like to take item under consent agenda, take item B and move that to discussion. And C and D, I think we need to hold off on those until our wage study is done.
Commissioner, I'd just like to... Mr. Jesuit had informed me too that B and F are actually the... I'm sorry, B and E are actually duplicates. So if you move... So we need to strike E.
Okay.
It wouldn't make sense to move B and E because they're the same thing. It was just an oversight.
Commissioner Pash, are you still with us? No. So with... Did you want to put that in the form of a motion, Commissioner Gold?
Yeah, I move that we approve the agenda as amended with consent agenda items B for discussion, C, D, and E just taken off the agenda.
Certainly. Clerk Cullen, you're welcome to take the microphone. You need to adjust that one on your right, if you would please. The microphone on your right? Yeah, thank you.
Renee Cullen, County Clerk, for the record. I just want to make sure that we're clear that the one item is a fill a vacancy. It's not really a promotion. It's due to the vacancy that has been occurred in our office for the position that the Commissioner's Office has taken over for the Finance Department. So it's to fill a vacancy. That's one of the orders that are before you. Are we not filling vacancies?
I think until the wage study... This is just my take. Until the wage study is done, which will be real soon, we need to kind of hold off on that. Do you think your office can run for maybe a week and a half?
Is that what I... Well, again, this is just...
It's supposed to be done by the 22nd.
Okay, again, this is just to fill a vacancy of an approved budgeted position that has been now vacated due to the Commissioner's Office selecting one of our trained persons to go to your Finance Department. So it's not just a promotion. It's to fill a vacancy. So that leaves us very, very light staffed as we get ready to prepare for the presidential 2020. And I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Gold, that, you know, you've got a salary study that's coming. I haven't heard when it's going to be ready. But again, this... One of those positions was just to fill a vacancy.
Yeah, I was told the 22nd. Is that correct?
Correct. It's supposed to be done by the time Charlene Harvey leaves, which would be the 22nd. I do think, Clerk Cullen, that maybe it'd be better if it came back as a transfer. It shows as a promotion is... And it's a little misleading because it's really not a promotion. I think it's a transfer, isn't it?
And I didn't... And I'm not preparing these myself. We were instructed that you wanted the Finance Department to prepare these. It would have been titled "Filling a Vacancy," not a promotion, if that made a difference to you all. But again, I didn't realize that we had a hiring freeze, that we weren't filling vacancies when we lose a position, when it's an approved budget item.
If I may. Hang on, Ms. Swift. It is an election year. I'm not confident that the wage study would necessarily be done by the 22nd. I'm as anxious as anyone else. It's hard for me to suggest to an elected official, long-term or short-term, directions that they should run their program. We are in a position where we're competing for employees, and I don't want to lose one. My job as a Commissioner is to raise, whether it's short-term or long-term, everybody's rate of pay in this county, so we can compete and show appreciation.
If I could?
Yes.
Right now, we're on amendments to the agenda. There was a suggestion. I think the idea for now would just be to remove this from the consent. It sounds like there's gonna need to be some discussion on this topic. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. We don't have a second on that motion, though, and so I'm prepared to make it.
Well, usual protocol on consent agenda is if one Commissioner wants it removed from the consent agenda, it gets removed for discussion. But Commissioner Gold kind of wanted to remove it and continue it, which is two different things. So I think what we do is we remove it. We're just at the agenda forming process right now. We're sort of getting into a discussion on the merits of even approving or continuing this. So I think at this point, we pull it from the consent agenda. It goes back and we revisit it later. But because...
For discussion.
Yeah, Commissioner Gold kind of made two actions: pull from consent and continue, which is... I know.
Well, that's just my brevity taking over.
I'm gonna wrap you on the knuckles, but...
I'm just a little nervous of delays.
Yep. No, I hear you.
Not so much.
But it...
And we've got some big issues facing us. So I do... Would like to hear from HR Director Swift, please.
Okay.
Julie Swift, payroll and HR. All I was gonna say is that they're titled a promotion, and the one we're talking about was just filling the vacancy, because it is a... It's going from one pay range to a higher pay range. So technically, it's a promotion because it's moving up in salary range. It is filling a vacancy, but the title "promotion" is just because it's increasing the salary range.
I'm not ignoring your request, Council Huddle. I think I'm following you, but I want to know if that is increased responsibility for these employees.
Again, it's a position that's already in the budget. The position that got vacated, it's not a change to that. It's the same position. It's the same pay. It's just knowing now that we have a vacancy in a position, we're just moving somebody from in our office into that position. So it's not an increase for the budget, and it was approved budget. It was an existing position that was vacated due to a transfer of one of our employees. So I just want to make sure that was clear. It wasn't just a promotion.
And I understand. Do you, Commissioner Gold, on the transfer of the employee from one department to another county department?
Just... I'm thinking money right now. That's my big thing, money, because we're hurting.
I get it. And like I said...
Could you clarify that, then, please, in this capacity?
Okay. Well, I kind of think we need to get back to the agenda amendments, and we can discuss it in just a minute. But let's take B. Let me restate my motion. I'm gonna take the other motion back. I'll restate it. Let's take B, C, and D off the consent agenda into discussion, and then remove E because it's the same as... What, B, was it? Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that motion. Yes, sir.
Two more amendments, Mr. Chair, if I could. Would like to add...
Sorry, she didn't need a second on that motion.
Well, I think we propose all the amendments, and then we move to... We consider all the amendments at one time when we have a motion to approve the amended agenda. I mean, that's one way to do it.
And I probably jumped the gun.
That's okay. Thank you for that clarification, both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so on the executive session, have two additional topics. Right now, it is... Excuse me. It actually just says "executive session." So I would like... Are we doing Julie Schmelzer, Director Schmelzer, on number 11, "exec session"? It just says 1926602. Are we doing any A, which is the...
So what happened is by the time the agenda was created, there was nothing scheduled for executive session. There were some things brought to our attention yesterday, so I believe it's appropriate to amend it right now to include those.
So 2, ORS 1926602. D is labor negotiations, Mr. Chair. We have some information on labor negotiations. And then also F and H, which is litigation likely to be filed and confidential information not subject to disclosure. Those are the two I'd like to do. Do we have anything, Director Schmelzer, on retention of an officer, agent, or employee or anything? Do we have any of that in there? Or is that an A, or are we not doing that?
I believe we might.
Okay.
When we get to 6C...
Okay.
I think we might be better off moving that to executive session. I think it depends how that conversation goes.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right. So 6C, and again, you're proposing then that we move, instead of 6C, we move that to executive session, which is the 1926602A, which is the retention of an individual agent, officer, employee of the county, and that'd be an agent. So, okay. Is that clear to the Board? We'd like to discuss 6C in exec session under that rule.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Pash, by chance are you with us? So we want to add another agenda amendment, and that is moving 6E partially as on till simple enough that Commissioner Pash can be here. And I think I'll probably request to have that in executive session. I don't know when that would be, probably February 5th. But he's not even able to hear us right now.
Okay. So you'd be moving to continue that one?
That's all I have.
Okay, got it.
And I just had...
Did we get them all?
And I just had one minor amendment, just on the job description for the Public Health Administrator under 5F. It says... In the text, it says the person reports to the Director of Operations, but in the title, it says Board of Commissioners. That's just a typo. It should say Director of Operations in the title. So just know when you're approving that job description. It's correcting an error.
As amended?
Yes.
Okay, with that amendment.
So are we finally ready for the motion?
I think so.
I believe so.
Okay. I will move that we approve the agenda as amended, as amended several times.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash, absent. Motion carried 2 to 0.
I want to tell one quick story here, or show a story. This comes up. I had it ready. Cute. I'm ready to go. Oh, here we go. Just a little bit of light. The first time I've ever heard the term "centenarian." This lady has 100 served in Vietnam, was a Navy nurse. Her name is Teresa Schmier. Her daughter is the Director of the... In North County, of the Wild Rivers Public Land Trust. I just want you to look at that smile. 100 years old, she does not look 100, in my opinion, but it gets better. She's on an honor flight back to Washington, DC. And I hope you agree, that smile is absolutely infectious. And she's quite healthy, so just pay a little tribute to a very honorable veteran that served her country in Vietnam during a very, very difficult time. Proud to have had the opportunity to read this story. So now we're up for public comments. I'm gonna call Gordon. Clay, first, please.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay. I want to bring you up to date on the suicide awareness and prevention council, where we stand right now. I'm very pleased to report that I believe that we have all positions, somebody for all positions except two, and that is faith-based and a city mayor or administrator. And I would like to put that out to... If there's anybody in the listening audience that is yet to fill those two positions and be most happy to have them file the application, it needs to be in in the next 24 hours... Or 20 hours. It needs to be in by the close of business tomorrow here at the office. And it can be faxed, or it can be too late to mail it. It could be faxed or sent in an email. I didn't want to bring you your attention to... Did you see this chart?
Got it.
You don't need to look at it. What it is, is I... The CDC in 2017 made a chart of the top 50 leading causes of death. And I took this and got it for every state. Curry County... Oregon is the most troubled county, state. There are eight age categories. Four of them, 15 to 54, suicide is the number-one leading cause of death in Oregon. And actually, if you look at the 0 to 14-year-olds, it's the sixth-leading cause of death. And you look at what the United States has and all the other states have, and we are... Actually, when you compare the United States and Oregon, every single one of the eight categories, plus the overall, we are... We have more suicides than... Or as a leading cause of death than any other state. And so this is one of the things that I'm happy, so happy that you established a council, and we are filling it, and we're going to be starting, hopefully very soon, on figuring out how to correct this situation for Curry County. Thanks.
Mr. Clay, when I was recognizing people in the audience, I did not mean to overlook you. So thank you. This is your third meeting in a row. And your effort to understand this problem and make a difference is just absolutely heartwarming. Thank you.
I don't work for the county.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Boyce, I had a question for Mr. Clay. Mr. Clay, you mentioned about a deadline, it sounded like, for submitting applications?
Correct. That's tomorrow.
Correct. And I understand there's urgency, but if people are not able to submit by tomorrow, let's say they're out of town, and they hear about this when they get back, would we accept applications after that, until the positions are filled?
Well, as I understand it, the... Well, I...
I would hate to leave a position unfilled if someone was later willing to come if they missed the deadline for some reason excusable. So would you be willing to consider that as well?
Well, I want to fill the positions, yes.
Sure, okay.
And I understand that any unfilled positions can be filled at the next Board of Commissioners meeting after somebody applies for it.
Thank you. Good.
They never die.
Thank you very much. I just didn't want people to think, oh, it's too late. I may as well not apply. What... Even though the deadline is coming up, they can apply after the deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Commissioner Gold.
I would think that that deadline would apply to when there is competition for one position, which my guess is there is not.
There is.
Oh, there is competition. Okay. That's competition. Good.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Mr. Clay, you said you wanted a Commissioner representative on there, and I don't believe we have. It's been brought to my attention, we don't have that as part of the 17. Is that correct?
That's correct. We don't have a position specifically for a county commissioner. So if a county commissioner wants to attend the meetings, they're more than welcome to do that, but we don't have to appoint a commissioner to the council.
No, I...
See you there.
I wasn't asking for...
That's my fault. I missed it.
My understanding was that many of the councils have a liaison as your liaison to public health, et cetera. This would be an ideal position to connect up if you were the liaison from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Patrick MacArthur?
Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. Council Huddle, I appreciate you taking a little bit of time with me. My name is Patrick MacArthur. I'm the president of Gold Beach here. I'd like to address a little problem that we have at the end of the jetty. The Coast Guard has installed a sound signal at the end of the jetty. It's a Model 232 sound signal. It's standard on a lot of coastal installations. Brookings has one. The difference in the one that Brookings has and the one that Gold Beach has is that not only does Brookings have many times the facilities... They have a commercial facility, have the recreational facilities down there for the salmon contest. They have 10 times the traffic we have here. They have the Model 232 also, but it's a little different. In Brookings, the Model 232 is mounted on a concrete platform. It has baffles installed in pre-engineered spots to direct the sound from omnidirectional to directional. In Brookings also, it's scheduled for on-demand. This means that when someone is at sea and needs help getting into the harbor, they key their VHF microphone five times. The sound signal picks up the sound, the request, and it begins to operate. It operates for 30 minutes continuously, one three-second blast every 30 seconds, until 30 minutes has elapsed, and then it reverses to a silent mode. It does this because the Coast Guard manual requires in Chapter 7 that fixed installations must consider location, adjacent structures, horizontal alignment, noise pollution, and the nearest residences. The one on the end of the north jetty goes off every 30 seconds. And so 120 times an hour, that's 2,800 times a day. I cannot be convinced that we need 2,880 sound blasts per day in the middle of the day when the sun's shining and the noise on the river. I would very much like to have a little support from the council, city commission. I mean, I've talked to the city commission, city council, pardon me, and I'm speaking to you now because I like to have a little support. I'd like to be able to send another letter to the Coast Guard saying I have the support of the county commission on this issue. It is in violation, not only the Coast Guard manual, it is in violation of Chapter 5, Section 5.10, Sections 2, 3, and 5 of the Brookings Municipal... Oh, excuse me, of the Gold Beach Municipal Code against unenumerated nuisances and noise pollution. So this device is in violation of our city laws. It's in violation of their own technical manual. It's in violation of any common sense. I'm simply... This thing goes off, and it literally will shake the pictures hanging on my wall, other one Hillside Street. So Hillcrest Street. So to me, all I'm looking for is a little modification of the Coast Guard signal so that they come within the parameters of their own manual, and that they come within the city ordinances of Gold Beach. The Coast Guard has responded, not to me, but they responded to a letter that Congressman DeFazio, who wrote them for me. They said it's too rough to install it on the north jetty. But it's already on the north jetty, so I don't see the sense on that. It's already on the north jetty. It's there at great expense because they pick up a helicopter every year and take it over there, and then take another helicopter and take it off twice a year. So that's a great expense to the Coast Guard. It's not doing anything for boater safety for a simple reason that is it's there all the time, except when people may need it. In the wintertime, when it's really rough, someone might need it. When they come in, they have it. As the situation stands now, if someone needs it during the wintertime, it's not there for them, because they take it out. So my contention is if it's necessary for boater safety, it's necessary for boater safety 365 days a week, because we care about the Coast Guard, we care about our boaters, we care about boater safety. This device is not doing the job. I'd just like to get it modified.
Mr. Gold?
I talked to Mr. MacArthur yesterday at great length, and I told him I would try to write a letter on his behalf to the Coast Guard, and he was going to get a petition of the neighbors stating that there's a sound problem. I know personally, if I had that thing going off every 30 seconds, it would drive me crazy. So...
Thank you, Commissioner.
If the commission agrees, I would be happy to do that.
I think that's a very good idea. Mr. MacArthur, that's the third time I've heard your presentation. Gets a little better each time. And I wonder about visitor... The level of visitor promotion that we do, and if we... If the city gets complaints on that. I used to live up on 11th Street, and with the window open at night, and yeah, a lot further away than your home is. And it was an issue 20 years ago. So thank you, and we'll be anxious to get that letter to you.
Very much. Thank you, sir. If I may, I have sent letters. Commissioner Gold asked me yesterday what I've done previously about it. I've sent a letter to the Admiral in charge in Seattle, to both of our U.S. Senators, to both of our state representatives, our state senator, and I've talked to the mayor about it.
So, Mr. MacArthur, if you could give me copies of those letters, so I can maybe incorporate them into my letter. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, are you wanting to speak on two different subjects?
Yes, please.
Okay. Would you mind delaying until after? We have some pretty important presentations here, and four Sheriff's Department personnel, and two from the Clerk's office. So would you mind delaying? I don't have an answer, sir. Well, I'm gonna let you decide when you want to speak, then.
I will, sir.
Thank you. So going to the presentation, years of service award. Sheriff Ward, thanks for being here today.
Morning, Commissioners. It's too bad that Commissioner Pash is not on the phone and be able to hear this presentation as well. Sheriff Ward from the Curry County Sheriff's Office. Today, we're here to celebrate five years of continual service of employment with this Curry County Sheriff's Office for Captain Phil McDonald. Even though we're only doing five years, he's been here five years. He's been in law enforcement for just over 30 years, and 12 of those years were the sheriff of Lake And twelve of those years were the Sheriff of Lake County, where he started his career back in nineteen eighty-nine, I believe. A little bit of a story behind how Phil came here is back in November two thousand fourteen, I had just taken over as sheriff, and there was an election process that year for sheriff in Lake County. And after twelve years, Phil was defeated in his position to run for sheriff. And then, but they were, they had come over here in November, right after the election, for a fishing trip. Phil had won at an O.S.A. event for On the Chetco, caught a nice salmon. My wife and I took-
Do we applaud now?
Valorant leave was the guy.
Oh, my goodness. You had the best.
So, we had taken Phil and Jen out for dinner down in Brookings, and I looked at him and I says, so what are your plans? And he says, you know, I really don't know, but, you know, we're kind of out of a job. I'm going to have to look. And I said, well, I'm almost a little bit embarrassed to ask you this, but I know you, since you are sheriff, but I have an open road position if you'd be interested. And his wife looked at me and says, would you do that? And I said, absolutely. And, you know, her eyes filled up with tears, and he goes, I'll take it. So, a month, a little over a month later, he came to work here, first part of January in two thousand fifteen. And since with all his training experience, you know, when Captain Espinoza retired, I had a second position open, and it was no doubt in my mind who I was going to put in there. And I confronted him, I said, look, would you be my second? He goes, absolutely. And in October, I believe, August, maybe it was August of two thousand eighteen, he became my second-in-command. And he's done a wonderful job with us running this and having support from the Commissioners this year, this last year. It's been incredible what we've been able to achieve. You've named off several things that you guys were able to do, you know, to replace the whole backwave microwave system for, to have communication with the first responders out there to make it safe for them to respond to high-profile cases. But anyway, he's been here five years, he basically half the man he used to be.
What was that?
Well, let me explain. He came here, he's a pretty large man, and he worked hard, he quit smoking, and he lost about a hundred pounds. And he is, he can run and jump and do, just like the rest of them, so. And I wouldn't have any issues having him follow me down and over a cliff or whatever and getting back out of there. So, he's been a godsend for me because he helped me run the Sheriff's Office and oversee everything and make sure of the budgets and everything. So, today, I want to recognize him for his five years with us, and hopefully, there's many more with him. So, Phil?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And tell your wife I appreciate her letting you come over here.
I will.
Lake County's loss, Curry County's gain.
Well, I just, I just want to-
Say a few words?
Yeah. Captain Phil McDonald, Sheriff's Office. I just want to say thank you. I came here, it's been five years, and today's the fourteenth, so, or fifteenth, so it was January eighth was my actual fifth-year anniversary, so it's just been right over five years. But this place has, it has its own unique challenges, but as a community, it's been the best move that my wife and I have made. This is our home. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve here, and I, my intention and my plans are to serve as long as Curry County will have me. I mean, I've got at least ten more years in me that I love doing what I do, and I just enjoy working here and serving the community and the citizens of this county. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. And Sheriff Ward, you know, like he said, I was in his boat at one point in my career as in being an elected official, and to find another sheriff that's willing to hire somebody, you know, that has my background sometimes is kind of hard to do. So, I really appreciate the opportunity that I've been given here, and it's, just like you said, it's been my pleasure and my honor to serve here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We heard you say ten years. We heard you say ten years.
I've got a bit more in me, a bit more in me, so.
Julie Smelzer, Director of Curry Operations.
Yes, so we want to give a five years of service to Shelley Crichton, who's down in our Building Safety Division of the Community Development Department. Shelley's been wonderful. She's kind of the smiley face everybody expects to see, and she's done great with calming people down and helping them with their permits and all the work she's done down there. Unfortunately, Shelley's having some health issues right now, and today is one of those days where she was not able to come into the office. So, we do want to recognize Shelley for all the work she's done. We do have an award sitting for her down on her desk waiting for her when she returns to the office.
Good.
Absolute wonderful human being and a thoroughly dedicated employee. I also want to recognize David Fortman, our lead code enforcement officers in the audience. Quarterly reports, if we may, county clerk in Community Development, Renee Cohen?
(inaudible).
Huh?
Oh, sorry.
You know, we always give you plenty of time, so why don't you go ahead and come on up? These people are trying to get back to work, so I thought probably you understood that. So, you're welcome to speak now.
I'll wait.
Well, you said you would wait, I'm sorry.
So, why don't we go forward with the clerk then and then Community Development? We've got a couple of people here, so we'll go after-
Yeah, I mean, they're standing out here, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back to the podium.
Oh, okay. For the record, I'm Renee Cohen, Curry County Clerk, and I've got just a quick overview that I'd like to give on our offices, and I've gotten some notes here, so please bear with me as I read through them. There's a lot of information, I'm going to try to give it to you quickly. For those that may not know, the county clerk position is responsible for the Elections Division and the Recording Division. Both offices have a total of five full-time employees, which includes the county clerk, and we are all cross-trained in both divisions. The county clerk recording division records land records such as deeds, mortgages, and liens, land partitions, DD two fourteen, military discharges, just to name a few. And these documents consist of approximately nineteen thousand to thirty-four thousand images annually that we record, scan, index, verify, archive for public access and for permanent retention. We are a federal passport acceptance facility. We process an average of a hundred and twenty passport applications and approximately a hundred and thirty marriage licenses annually for Curry County. We have recently acquired the vital records portion for issuing certified copies of death certificates for our citizens. We also maintain the county governing body's orders, resolutions, ordinances, minutes, and agendas for public review and permanent retention. Our office collects and audits revenues for the county surveyors, County Corner Preservation Fund, Department of Revenue CFA grant, and Oregon's Land Information System, OLIS, and Oregon's Housing and Communities Department. And Sue, you'll appreciate this, last year, we've collected approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars for the Surveyors Cornerstone Preservation Fund, forty-one thousand dollars for the Department of Revenue's CFA grant, forty-six hundred dollars for the State's OLIS program, and two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the State's Housing and Community Department. The county clerk Elections Division coordinates, conducts all elections in Curry County. We ensure that elections are in compliance with federal, state, and local election laws. We are responsible for the printing, distributing, designing, programming, tabulating of the election ballots. Department also directs the preparation and maintenance of records related to voter activities such as voter registration, precincts, candidates, initiative and referendum, recall, and special district services such as formation, annexation, consolidation, merger, withdrawal, and dissolution. We also maintain the district's ordinances, budgets, and director information. Since two thousand fifteen, our voter registration database has increased from approximately thirteen thousand to eighteen thousand active registered voters due to the Oregon Motor Voter Bill implemented in two thousand sixteen with no additional staff added.
That's crazy.
We are now preparing for the two thousand twenty presidential primary election. There are about, there were about twenty-two legislative bills that pertain to our Elections Office. One of very special note is House Bill eight sixty-one, which will require the Secretary of State to pay for postage on voted ballots being mailed through the United States Postal Service.
Wow.
We've received cybersecurity training and a site assessment for IT and our office from the Department of State. We are close to finishing Phase One of our deed volume project, which is digitizing the county clerk's historic land records. We have already completed fifty of the eighty-two deed volumes that encompass the timeframe between eighteen fifty-six and nineteen sixty. The next conversion phase will consist of records on microfilm from nineteen sixty to nineteen ninety-two, and all records from nineteen ninety-two until current are already on computer. We have implemented the digital research room for citizens who want to look up their indexes of deeds and mortgages online. You can now go to our county clerk's website, you can just click a button that says Digital Research Room or Search Land Records Index tab, and you can view those documents from home. You can search from home. E-recording was successfully launched in two thousand seventeen, and we are now recording about as many e-recording instruments as we do paper instruments. We are close to deploying our new marriage license application to assist the public in applying for their marriage license online. And we would like to thank the board and the Maintenance Department, Tad, Chet, and Eric, for the removal of our asbestos in the recording office. It was very much appreciated. We'd also like to give a special, I would like to give a special thank to our employees in our clerk's office and the employees of the county who continually work very hard for our citizens, having to do more with less. And a final note, we are seeing an increased activity in our passport services due to DMV not being ready for the Department of State's Real ID Act of two thousand and five. TSA airports will require effective October first, two thousand twenty, a form of identification that complies with the federal Real ID Act. Oregon's current driver's license is not compliant with the act. DMV will begin offering a Real ID driver's license option starting July sixth, two thousand twenty. It's a state-issued enhanced driver's license card, an acceptable form of identification in lieu of a Real ID license to use at the airport. Checkpoint for domestic and international travel is a valid passport book or card which you can get at our office. So, that's an update for what we're doing. I appreciate the opportunity to let you know what it is that we're doing, what we're working on back at our office, and we appreciate your support.
One more. Did you have something, Commissioner?
No.
House Bill eight sixty-one. I was hoping if Bev Carano had, if Secretary of State had a little something to do with that, that is really good news.
That was a tremendous bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Okay, so, should we go to, yes, let's go to-
Planning would be first.
What's that?
Planning would be first.
Planning?
Planning.
Why am I missing out right here?
So, under the Community Development-
You, I'm sorry.
-report, we have four divisions that we're going to report on today.
Okay.
So, the first one would be planning, and Becky Crockett is our planning director, and she is out of the office this week. So, I'm just going to give a brief summary of what she has going on in her department. The Plan Commission approved a vintage RV park in Naseka Beach, so we'll have our first vintage RV park, which I'm really excited to see. That's a real draw for, from a tourism aspect as well. They also have done the administrative approval on a roof trust manufacturing facility that's going to open up in the county. It's in a heavy commercially zoned area in Brookings, so it's going to be new business in Brookings. And they're working with GIS. Lake County does our GIS, and they're working with Lake County on addressing over sixteen hundred parcels that are either missing the zoning data or have the incorrect zoning data on them. So, that's a pretty extensive project. If you remember a while back, we hired a young man down in Building Safety who's learning the ropes to become a building official, and he's helping with some odd projects. He's also helping a little bit on that GIS project to get those proper, properties properly IDed with the zoning. They've had some Planning Commission meetings. They have a new member who started in October, and so they haven't met too much this winter, but they do have their next meeting scheduled for February twentieth, tentatively, and they have quite a few projects. They're looking at a final partition for the Pacifica at Rogue Reef Subdivision. They're considering an application for Curry County Parks for a dry camp facility at Social Security Bar. And then, they have an application for a temporary asphalt plant, which is in a forced grazing, forced grazing zone parcel, and it's in the Langless area. So, that's a new business, or I'm sorry, temporary setup that we might have there. Some possible upcoming applications they're reviewing or looking at right now are two subdivisions. One would be a sixteen parcel subdivision in Harbor Hills, would be within the urban growth boundary, and then a twenty-two parcel subdivision in Harbor Hills as well, also within the urban growth boundary. As far as building, the building inspector is out in the field, so I'm going to just give you a brief report on what they've got going there. First of all, if you look at the past year as a whole, the single-family dwellings were not quite double of what they were the previous year, so we have a lot of new homes coming on the market, which is good. This past year, they had fifty-nine permits for new homes, and that was up twenty-four from the previous year, so the previous year only had thirty-five. So, that's really good news. Their, overall for the year, their permits were up as well. They had four hundred and eight the previous year. This past year, they were at four hundred and eighty. But when you look at the quarter, it's pretty exciting stuff. So, when you look at the October to December quarter compared to the previous quarter, we've seen a significant volume, increase in volume, which is really great considering this past quarter was normally a slow quarter. So, for a slow quarter, they actually saw one hundred and thirty-five, an increase of one hundred and thirty-five permits to the previous quarter. And then, as far as new single-family dwellings for the quarter, it's up twenty-eight compared to the previous quarter. And commercial activity is also up, so we're up eighteen permits from the previous quarter. So, thirty-seven commercial projects, just this last quarter alone, yes.
Just a question on the permits. Was a lot of the increase due to the-
Amnesty program.
Yes, amnesty.
No. So, with the amnesty program, at first, it was a glut of calls and people inquiring, and the majority of it was people checking to see if they were in compliance or if the property they purchased was in compliance. After that initial month of all those calls, it really dropped down. So, I have a feeling that we're, on the code enforcement side, Mr. Fortman's probably going to get pretty busy on issuing citations or warnings to people that have not received the permits also. But, no, the majority of that work was just due to the economy, and I like to think it's the fact that people are gaining a little trust in the system. They know we're able to turn around permits faster than we were before. Hopefully, that had some impact on it, but work is definitely up down there. And again, like the Clerk's Office, they're doing more with less. We've scaled back on the contractors that we're using, the outside contractors we're using for inspections. We're trying to do as much in-house as possible, in the department, within the department as possible. So, the building official is working probably time and a half, I would say, to try and get a lot of those inspections completed. So, reorganization, building and planning, as you know, they have reorganized, they're all one central, you come to one central location now, and at that counter, you're able to talk with either a planning person or a building safety person. And code enforcement is also in there at the current time as is surveying, so when you go there, you're able to actually access four departments. So, that reorganization was effective the first of the year and has, the employees like it, and I think the public likes it as well.
It's really very well organized down there.
It is. It was a, it was a good move. It was a good decision. So, next, we have code enforcement. Our code enforcement officer, Dave Fortman, is here, and I believe he actually has a PowerPoint you'd like to share with us.
Welcome, sir.
My love, take this with you, Dave. It's on the right-hand side, just sticking up there. No, no, it's, whoa, that's it. Your hand's right by it. No.
It's a little white thing?
That's it.
It's a little white thing?
Okay.
Thank you. We heard you say ten years.
Good morning, Dave Fortman, Curry County Code Enforcement Officer. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to talk about the program, but I more want to thank the board for the support that you've given in the last year of getting this program moving.
Go to here, probably bottom.
Getting a direction. I want to give thanks to my supervisor, the Director of Operations for the county, Ms. Mouser, but I also want to give thanks to the people of Curry County, who I just are reacting in a way that I never thought would happen. Every day I have people, when I'm out on calls, show up and start waving and honking and coming over and saying thank you, and I just didn't believe that would ever happen in my line of work. So code enforcement was, I was hired for the county in the end of September last year as an eighteen-hour-a-week employee. Program really didn't get going until January or so, with the cases mixed in. As of June first, the board assigned animal services to code enforcement among our other jobs, and on July first, became a full-time employee of the county. In twelve, in twenty nineteen, six hundred and eighty-eight separate complaints or report, what I call them requests for services, were filed with code enforcement. A complaint, I don't call them complaints because what I tell people when I go to people's houses is, nobody's complaining about you, they're reporting there's a problem, and I'm the one that's going to figure out whether there is or not, to take away the antagonistic attitudes between neighbors. Currently, there are seventy-one of those six hundred and eighty-eight cases as of the end of the month, active, twenty-seven are pending. The twenty-seven pending are cases that just haven't gotten to yet, to triage them out to find out if jurisdiction or things that we can do on them. Everything is handled on a, on a prioritized basis. So the cases are kind of broken up as, by the population. About two-thirds of the cases are in South County. The remaining third is in Central and North County, with a few in East County, if occurring. Nineteen were found to be no jurisdiction, and twenty-four had service components that crossed the line through multiple areas.
Mr. Fortman, what do you mean by no jurisdiction? Does that mean it's not county jurisdiction?
Correct, not county jurisdiction, not our program jurisdiction. Might have been...
Gill and land.
...a statement issued for sanitation in the city of Brookings, for example. So classification of cases, code enforcement, we break, we track all of our cases. Life safety issues are issues that, if not corrected, could potentially cause someone serious harm or injury. A simple example is someone who leaves a refrigerator in your yard unsecured, as an example. Leaves gasoline out next to the electrical cord in the weeds in the summer all the time. Health and sanitation are both inside. People are leaving trash, people are dumping their sewage, people don't have sewage service, and they're dumping their matters on the end of the creeks of day, to the property. But it also applies to residents inside at times. I've been called to several residents who are hoarders, were trying to be taken out by the ambulance, and six-foot piles of trash fell on top of the emergency rescue people as inside. So I work with a lot, with the families of trying to resolve these problems and find people help that are living in these situations. Abandoned property, abandoned property for code enforcement is primarily vehicles and RVs that are abandoned on our public roads. Zoning issues are noncompliance of zoning. Building issues are, code enforcement focuses on non-permitted construction. People are building a residence. I was out at three properties yesterday, where they're all building residence, no permits, no clearance, or that they're not complying with the building inspectors. Property waste is when we've identified a property that, for whatever reasons, the owners have relocated traditionally outside the county, and they're just holding on to the property. Traditionally, what they tell me is because we have such great low tax rate, and they'll develop it in twenty years from now. That property is deteriorating and rotting out right in front of us and is a haven for illegal activities, stolen property, drugs, kids partying. Code enforcement works with the Public Health Department. Again, we back up the public health inspectors when there's no compliance given to them. When we've had a hotel RV park was a good example, where the health inspectors went out to inspect their water system, and they refused them access to the property repeatedly. And finally, code enforcement was brought in to try to affect that and, and resolve the issues. Public health, other public health is, we track all of the rabies and dog bites in the county to make sure that we don't have a rabies problem. Environmental health, we haven't been breaking those out, and that's a new category we're starting to as of January first. Environmental health is the state DEQ statutes on water and air quality. DEQ has a, tries very hard and does a fantastic job, but getting down here from Salem or wherever they refer a lot of the minor DEQ violations to us. Animals has become part of our program. I'll talk about that in a minute, sixty-four, and we provide services to the Park Department nine times in the last year. Since July first, we started counting the number of contacts made with different citizens in lieu and while pursuing these cases. Four hundred and forty-one contacts, separate contacts were made with different individuals, and these are not maybe multiple contacts for a particular complaint. Again, the community's support has been great, and then what we're looking towards the future year is what is the anticipated intake of our new requests or calls for services? Actually, we keep seeing it grow every month. And the first year, we're more focused, it seemed, by the communities right near the main highways and roadways, the more urban communities, and now I found myself in the last month being up in the backwoods and doing more and more forewhiling out there and dealing with problems in the backwoods. And I think that's just going to grow as we keep going on, and people understand. Okay, missing one slide. Where we're trying to go into next year, these slides are out of order, we have a transient problem, just like every other community does. We have a serious one down in Harbor area right now, which is going to take the community's involvement, code enforcement, Road Department, Sheriff, Board of Commissioners, everyone needs to be involved in trying to address the issues that develop that camp and how to prevent it. We're looking at developing more community development support, meeting with, I met with a few of the local groups over the last year and talked about their problems and their focuses. So that will be a priority for the next year, is meeting with the local citizens' actions, all the different committees that are out there to talk about what their concerns are in their community. The board has improved a second code enforcement officer, who if, if is hired, will be focusing more on central, north, and east complaints to provide more services to that area, but will also cover the south. Development of animal services, animal services is one of the confusing things, and most people don't understand what we're doing in code enforcement. I hate, I'm not the dog catcher for the county. I don't go down the streets chasing people's dogs, I don't go on people's properties stealing people's dogs. Where animal services get into it is, it's two o'clock in the morning, and you're called for an ambulance, and you're a little old lady in your house with nobody around, and you won't leave with that ambulance because your only creature in life is sitting next to you with four legs, and nobody's there to take care of it. So we get a lot of callouts at night, callouts to auto accidents, callouts to arrest. It's amazing how many pets are out there, including a pet turkey that was driving around in a car one day with someone who was arrested. So we respond to calls, we respond to injured animals, we take injured animals to the emergency hospitals. That's the primary focus. Our secondary focus is trying to develop and respond to the nuisance animal ordinances, both at the state and of the county. Nuisance animal is, it's two o'clock in the morning, and the dog next door keeps barking at you every night. The dog barks all day long while their owner's at work, the dog's running down the highway. So we are reactive to complaints and process them again as requests for services and trying to develop it. So where we're trying to go in the next year, in the next year is developing, I've been working with the different stakeholders in this field, developing training resources to how to deal with your animal that has anxiety every time you go to work and barks at everything. We're looking at trying to develop a special animal foster site. It's kind of interesting, again, at nine o'clock at night, when you get a call to pick up a turkey, and you're going, oh, what do I do with a turkey? Or I have miniature horses running down the highway. The shelter's not too wild about having horses put into the dog kennels. At the request of local law enforcement, we've taken over the database of nuisance animal complaints, because what some of the law enforcement agencies in the county have said is that they keep sending officers out to the same calls. One officer doesn't know what the previous officer does, the person gets five, ten warnings about their barking dog, and then finally, the community, the property owners are just livid because nobody's done anything. So now the county is referring all of these, that we're tracking in a database, and when we see a problem, we go out and provide them with education and talk about ways to solve the problems that are being identified with us. So again, animal services, we're trying to look to be proactive, to reach out to the community, and, why down here? Okay, that's the slide I was missing, okay. So who do we provide services to? Our big customer is people. That's probably ninety-five percent, ninety percent of our referrals comes from the community talking about a problem. We provide services to the different cities, particularly in animal services, backing up the building department in the cities that they, they, they provide services to, planning into another city, provide them, as I said, public health, economic development. We're looking at, again, trying to identify properties that are underutilized, trying to work with property owners to get them back in the market to create more housing and safer communities. We work hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Department, local and state law enforcement agencies, fire districts responding to illegal burns. It's amazing, I went to two trash fires yesterday that were disguised as burning leaves, but the materials in those trash fires are often carcinogenic, and that's why they're illegal. And it was, the smoke was just boring in the next door's neighbors, all their plastics that were being burned. One of our other customers is the Road Department, assuring and helping the Road Department with encroachment issues, monitoring their problems when they have drainage issues and somebody's blocking their covert, camping on their roads. We work hand-in-glove with the Road Department. We're trying to identify for the Assessor's Office those properties that have been built and developed that have never been permitted, never been on the tax rolls. There's a number of properties that I go to where I have people living there, and it's supposed to be an empty lot. Again, providing emergency animal services. We provide services to other service districts, sanitation, water departments. We provide backup services on, particularly on animals and trash to state parks. And we get a lot of calls from developers that are looking to develop property and wanting to know, is there a problem with that property? Is there some violations? Is there something going on? So we answer those questions. And with, if, if the county adopts the absent property owner thing, we hope to take that database and use it for services for emergency management, so that they know which properties are empty out there, should there be a disaster, a fire, and they're having to go in to, make a decision to go in to rescue people. Okay, so that was one slide.
If I may, did you, did you have anything?
No.
Real quickly, just a little bit of detail between the active and pending cases.
Active, well, active means something is going on with them. A code enforcement case traditionally takes multiple visits, multiple visits over multiple The second thing that happens that keeps cases pending is that we would find and close one case, for example, a person had a two-hundred-and-fifty-pound pig in, living inside their house as a pet, who would then break out of the house and go molest the neighbor's dog.
[laughing]
Yeah, welcome to my life. I'm making this up.
Well, that's hilarious, so I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness.
So dealing with that issue, finally got a resolution to that issue and closed the case, and part of that issue got into sanitation and smell in their yards and all that jazz. And, you know, three weeks later, new complaints come in from the neighbors over the sanitation in the yard, and trash is now going out in the yard. So some of the cases remain a little bit more open for a period of time to allow, even though they've complied, for me to go by and drive by and monitor and make sure and give them a pat on the back, you're doing great, and, you know, continue this up, so we're not keep adding more and more cases to the same property. Initial, pending initial, we get referrals from all different sources, so given the limited availability of the code enforcement staff right now to respond to cases, we make priority decisions every day. Is this a life safety goes to the top? Is this an animal life safety? Is this a health safety? Down, down the list. So some cases where referral goes in there, my neighbor built this yurt, yurt?
Yurt.
Yurt. May not get investigated for a week or two or three, depending on where we are and that priority case is on there. They do get investigated down the road. I carry a clipboard of all those, and when I'm bored, I go hit more of these.
You said two-thirds of the, of the cases were in South County. Can I get a rough idea, how many of those are in Harbor, south of Chaco River Bridge?
Uh, that two-third would be probably eighty-five, eighty percent, eighty, eighty-five percent. You have that unincorporated around Brookings, we do provide animal services to Brookings, so there's some numbers in there. And then Carpenterville Road's got its little pockets, Cape Farello, Farello has its little pockets in there. So there's little pockets north of there that get into.
I'm so happy that the community is really, really positive about your work and this effort and the results, good results.
And again, I, it's, the, the thanks should go to this board for creating this program. The thanks should go to Julie for giving me the directions that I need, but more importantly, the thanks should go to the community for accepting the program and understanding. I just pontificate one more second. Initially, when I walk into someplace, phone's running, running in my ear, you get, why are you here? You're the government, go away, you know, you're an evil person, why are you telling me I can't live in this RV and dump my sewage on the ground? And we spend a lot of time talking about safety and how many buildings have burned down because the RVs were plugged in, or whatever the issues are. And then I will say that probably ninety, ninety-five percent of the people that I deal with in enforcement at the end say, thank you. Thank you, you treated me with respect, we got it resolved. They, they now understand it's not just a law of, there's a stop sign there at two o'clock in the morning, there's a purpose why code enforcement's out here.
Very anxious to get you your deputy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Question, Mr. Huddle?
Thanks. A couple of weeks ago, or a few meetings back, there was a action item to clean up some county-owned property on the Chaco River, and then the board moved to continue that and bring it back. I don't know if it ever got back here. Is there any plan on that particular matter?
Yes, I've met with my supervisor about getting this back to the board. That, that matter has grown exponentially since it was brought up in November, and it's a priority issue to get it resolved. What's happened is this deals with a transient camp, which has brought in more transients with the bad weather, because it's got a natural canopy and a protective area for people. And then those transients, every day, go out to the local shopping center in Harbor and the two shopping center, and those are the people you see sitting out in the street, those are the people that are panhandling. Sword fights in the camp, burning trash in the camp. We've, we've got to do something about those properties. Thank you.
Thank you for postponing our meeting to go into the southeast section of the bridge. So I'm anxious to get down there with you and learn what I can. Also, subject to board approval, I'd appreciate it if you could come to the January 22 afternoon workshop on absentee owner. That, I think you could probably, would be able to contribute potentially that discussion, that conversation. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
So, Mr. Barnes, thank you for your patience. You're welcome to visit now if you like, and then JJ will take a break. Staff Jesuit, excuse me. Is that okay? I think we're okay on time.
David Barnes, thank you. I just want to start out by, it's a last, a couple of meetings ago, a month ago now, this board approved the purchase of a new software program based on the recommendations of your finance director, who as of a week or two from now will not be here anymore. Looking at the numbers that she presented, I ran the numbers again myself. And now that you're considering hiring an accounting clerk also, which was the big cost savings in this new software program, if you go ahead and go through with this, at the end of five years that you have this, this will cost you an additional $596,000 over the cost of what you have using the software program that you have now. I only made two, sorry, don't have any copies.
Thank you.
These are the numbers that were presented by the finance director last month. Paired out was the ambiguous cost for services and materials that she had in there. These are just the pure costs as they stand now. The top is where you currently are using the Cassell system.
Excuse me, did you say the top set of numbers?
The top set of numbers is where you currently are right now. Those are your projections keeping Cassell. What I did in that from her presentation was she had also added in the cost that you will see below for a new accounting clerk of approximately $60,000 a year. She had added that into the cost of keeping Cassell, saying that if we kept the Cassell program, that she would need a new accounting clerk. So by going to OpenGov, they wouldn't need the accounting clerk, and then we would be saving this $60,000 a year. Now you have on the consent agenda for this morning, hiring that new accounting clerk. At $60-plus thousand a year over the next five years, that's a cost of $300,000. The difference in the price between the software, between the Cassell software and the OpenGov software is approximately $100,000, more than $100,000, bringing you to your $596,000 in additional cost to run your finance department over the next five years. Since your finance director is leaving, I'd like you to seriously reconsider your contract with Cassell. I would ask you today not to go ahead and point the...
Oh, did you mean OpenGov or Cassell?
With OpenGov, I'm sorry. I would like you to seriously reconsider your contract with OpenGov before it gets started. If we have to pay them a couple thousand dollars to get out of it since we signed it already, that's one thing. But like I said, you're looking at almost $600,000 here over the course of the next five years.
Mr. Barnes, thank you. Stay there if you would for a moment, please. I didn't mean to leave you out of this conversation, but I, just a few days ago, spent time with Council Huddle on that exact subject. I mentioned that when we voted on that, that was the hardest vote I've made yet in the three years I've been here, for the reasons you're outlining, but also with the somewhat of an equal amount of optimism what the program could do. I was also following Commissioner Pash, who followed it fairly closely, quite closely. And the rationale seemed to justify, and then what tipped me on the vote in the positive direction was the possibility that we could work with schools and the cities to cover some of that cost and in addition, bring the county together and in addition, make their jobs easier and more efficient. I just don't think, the reason I'm having second thoughts and really struggling and wondering if we can get out of the contract that I discussed with Council Huddle, and he gave me some good advice there. And so I think that's where we're headed. I think we can wait until Commissioner Pash returns, Pennington's return. And it's a tough decision, but I think that's probably where we have to go, notwithstanding the information that you've given here. Because it's just the upfront cost in itself on an annual basis that just is almost demoralizing. And so with everything else we've had to deal with, we get back to the road fund reserves, and then we go through the guilt process and the concern about that. So, yeah, I'd talk more on that than I wanted to, but I follow you very closely. And I think that's getting to be a fairly consistent concern and possible new direction, thank you.
Yeah, the only person who was, you know, the only person who was really dissatisfied with the Cassell was the person who's leaving. So I did have something else I wanted to bring up. I got a rather official-looking email the other day from Curry County, Oregon. It was a press release on the Lobster Creek Fire. I noted last year, we spoke, this committee spoke about use of county letterhead and the proper use of the Board of Commissioners' letterhead versus individual commissioner letterhead. When I got this email, like I said, it comes, the sender is Curry County, Oregon, and the subject is a press release. And when I got this, I found out shortly after I opened it that this was more of a campaign or a self-promotion piece by a county commissioner. And I would like the county to, it's sad to have to ask this, but I would like the county to seriously consider a formal communications policy for the commissioners. This was sent to me by, it was said from sender Curry County, Oregon, but the tagline on it was the Coach Court email. This is supposed to, it's supposed to be a press release, but it's really not, it's a self-promotion piece. It's a shameless grab for credit, and it's just, it's kind of sad and disheartening that this goes out as trying to mask itself as an official county, official county press release. And I think that the county really needs at this point in time to come up with an official press release policy if this is going to be the norm. You know, we had a big discussion about use of the county letterhead last year and commissioners sending out mail on Board of Commissioner letterhead instead of on their own. And, you know, it's really unfortunate that somebody wants to abuse this like this and try to provoke false thoughts when that's not the case, you know? And I just asked you if we could look into this further.
Mr. Huddle?
Yes? Thanks, Mr. Chair. So just for the speaker's benefit, the press release, I reviewed it before it went out. I did consider the press release county business. It was involving a description of the resolution of the claims against the county on the Lobster Creek Fire. Commissioner Boyce developed it, and he consulted with myself, our outside insurance defense counsel, as well as our insurance claims jester on the content of it. So from my point of view, I considered it to be a matter of county business, a press release, and not, as you described it, as some kind of a promotional thing. Regardless, we have addressed Commissioner Boyce on his use of the Curry County. And thank you for pointing it out, we have addressed Commissioner Boyce on his use of an email tagline or address or whatever they're called, domain name as Curry County, Oregon, that is official county business. And then, as you can imagine, there is a big gray area between, what's the difference between Court Voice sending something like that on a Court Voice County Commissioner letterhead, which is from the county, versus his Coach Court email? I think those would be determined on a case-by-case basis by a court of law. But the points you made are valid. We've talked to Commissioner Boyce about not using Curry County, Oregon, as his own personal email address. And he has, I think, immediately corrected that. And I, sorry we didn't make you aware of that, but I don't know, Commissioner Boyce, is there anything else you wanted to say about that?
No, just, it is a gray area, and it is tough. And on the backside of that press release, it has the county phone number. Would that be potentially inappropriate, or should I have my personal number on it?
I think most of this could have been avoided, and I think, and I agree with the speaker as well. We're not super consistent on what goes out under a county letterhead. But what I've seen a lot of commissioners do, like for instance, earlier in the meeting, Commissioner Gold said she will put something, she wanted some materials from our speaker, and she said, "I want to put this in my letter." I'm assuming that will be on County Commissioner letterhead, but it will identify that it's only coming from one commissioner. So I think a lot of this could have been more or less avoided if you would have just used your Court Voice County Commissioner letterhead on that release. I believe that's been done in the past, and that way, most receivers know it's only...
I have tons of documents to verify that. And this doesn't say anything about Curry County Board of Commissioners.
No, but...
It just says Curry County, Oregon. We have corrected that, as you said. And I think your recommendation of a policy, an official policy, might help. I remember, you mentioned a year ago, I think that's when Commissioner Gold wrote the governor, and it said Board of Commissioners. And so I have all that documents, it was a misunderstanding, and I think it's simple to correct. Small county, Curry County, Oregon, I send it to a lot of different commissioners and people, contacts in the state of Oregon that are having the same rural issues and battles that we're having, in particular with forest lands management and federal lands. So they are anxious to get that information. Likewise, I get a lot of information from them, mostly on county email, but some of it does come on my personal email.
Thank you, you know, you mentioned it again, and you know, Commissioner Gold wasn't the only one who sent out things on the Board of Commissioners' letterhead, you've done it as well.
That's not correct. That is not correct.
That is on your county commissioner website right now. That is sent out as, that is sent out by you.
And I corrected that, quickly corrected that. This is a mishap, this was sent from the Oregon State Capitol.
I printed that from your website this morning, sir, that's on Curry, that's on your commissioner website, county.curry.us.
So I believe that we're over our three minutes.
Hey, and House Bill 2379 had full board approval.
Has nothing to do with the issues on the letter, it has to do with your addressing of the letter.
Getting a little argumentative, and we're...
Yeah, we are coming up on our time, and we're past our three minutes, so I do, I do think it's a great suggestion, and I will look into a communications policy. It has been recommended before, so I will follow up on that so we don't run into issues or concerns. So I believe right now we want to take a break, is that correct?
We're in recess, thank you.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food, and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work in smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind. in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves, or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide, or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea, or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside, and standing 600 feet-
Bring the video for the meeting, so-
Yeah, I got a call about the streaming. They couldn't stream either.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we have, we have it. Who's that?
Thanks, Ms. Pliggy. There we go, okay. We are still on quarterly reports, correct?
Yes, we are.
And that would be Economic Development Director, Summer Madison.
Morning Commissioners, Summer Madison, Economic Developments. I am fortunate enough to work with all of you on a regular basis, every day, so thank you for the opportunity for me to briefly share some of the projects we have on the record. I just learned at break that Jim Sealy's passed away. I don't know if you knew that or not. That's a grave loss for our communities and our region. Thankfully, Marie Simons is there to carry that torch, so... Let's see. Housing Task Force started the year off with assessment of meeting structure and strategic planning. There has been a shift in the facilitator position that wasn't funded for this year, so we're taking that as an opportunity to kind of reassess and prioritize meetings, which it looks like they're going to be quarterly public meetings, with monthly quartet meetings, giving the committees the opportunity to have more time to work together and then produce for their meetings for the public. Fire Training Facility. Currently, that sits at the legislative level with the state. Commissioner Boyce has been working with partners to find the, not find, but actually secure the funding for property acquisition. But that is still moving forward, and we're really excited about that. I have a grant open that will be submitted to Business Oregon on Sunday, the 19th. Business Oregon has asked us to apply for this grant, that will give us the opportunity to provide a facility that would include a business incubator, business startup services, and workspace, including training and access to resources with an emphasis on the traded sector. So, we're really excited about that. Kicking off here this year is the Micro Enterprise Grant in partnership with CCD, the county of Douglas and Coos, and sponsored by the city of Roseburg. So, we're really excited to see that kind of fall in line with the opportunity for a business incubator, and really start streamlining those opportunities for our local entrepreneurs. Well, let's see, we've had four Porterford listening sessions over this past year, and that's been a great opportunity to continue that relationship with SCDC, and get into our smaller communities, and find out what the shortcomings are, and how we could help fill the gaps for community collaboration and communications. They're pretty exciting, and they've got some committees that are producing well on housing, communication, and tourism and promotions. Let's see, emergency and disaster preparedness has been a pretty strong focus over this past year. I attended EOC training with Jeremy Duhmeyer, our Emergency Services Coordinator, and that was enlightening and a little overwhelming, but I'm grateful to bring back those skills that we will need someday. Also, working on the development of the Cape Blanco Airport. The Oregon Department of Aviation gave us the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Boyce, Emergency Services, and state parks, so that we could look at developing a north county location for emergency services, should we lose access to the 101. That's actually a pretty exciting development, but we'll see how that comes out. Ultimately, it looks like Cape Blanco is the most usable airport on the coast, and so that really is being focused on as far as disaster preparedness goes. The Opportunity Zone is being marketed. We held some investor meetings and partnered those with some entrepreneurs that had some great project ideas, and... Yeah, I think, I can't really, there's some confidentiality, but I'm sure that we're going to see some projects come out of that that are very exciting. Also, teaming up with the Curry County Board of Realtors to promote that program as well, and make sure that we help fill the gaps that keep us from getting that moving quicker. Just starting to touch on green energy, working with Commissioner Boyce, and he's been pretty diligent in attending those meetings and bringing back the information. We kind of tag-team meetings when we can, and make sure that at least one of us is at that meeting, bring back that information. But we have some good opportunity there as well. Met with DLCD in the Planning Department several times over the past few months, in a forum setting where different jurisdictions have come to the table and asked for help with water systems, infrastructure, and the re-zoning and reassessment of land use for housing. And so, that is probably the most prominent topic that we have discussed, and we're excited to see how much more attention that gets and how quick that moves forward. Commissioner Gold and I have been working with the school districts, and it's been an amazing opportunity. Commissioner Gold has strategically scheduled these meetings with just the principals and then administration, and she's really spearheaded the efforts to make sure that our schools understand that we want the best resources available to all of them, and has put in a lot of effort into identifying those resources, the assets, and it's so nice to see the schools on board and wanting to partner and work together for the better of all of our kids in the community. With that, we hosted a Career and Technical Education STEM Outreach Meeting here. We had the regional STEM Hub Coordinator come down with youth pathways, and that gave us the opportunity to meet with folks in the community that represent all different socio-demographics for our youth, and brought some enlightening notes that helped us clearly define what the needs were as far as career and trade, technology development for our kids, focusing more on just services, not just college, but giving them an opportunity to build on that. So, with that, we partnered our current grant efforts for STEM Hub effort, and we're just awarded the opportunity for additional funding through Oregon Community Foundation. Northwest Economic Development Summit, that was an annual event I attended last year, consisting of four days packed with legislative and trending updates with resource, marketing, let's see, SCDC, CCD, Regional Solutions, Business Oregon. We've all been participating in a monthly roundtable, and so keeping each other apprised of what priorities might be popping up versus other projects we have, and how we can support each other and really work together to make things move quicker. That's been a great opportunity. We also hosted several mastermind group meetings in partnership with South Coast Development Council. And it appears, and those have been great meetings, we have a diverse attendance in the community. And I think where that's leading us is moving towards an economic development advisory group. I personally and professionally would like to see that happen, and the seed's been planted, so we'll see how that flourishes. The Southern Oregon Career and Trade Expo was late last year, up in Roseburg, and Commissioner Pash and I attended that with much enthusiasm and gratitude to Kristi Meacham for spearheading that from the Oregon Department of Transportation. It was an amazing opportunity. We had over 100 youth in the county attend. And with that, we have decided to host a job fair here in Curry County, April 1. We are partnering with the schools on that and such, and hoping that we can get a great turnout, and Kristi Meacham has offered her support in however we can make that happen. The Events Center and the Fairgrounds is working with a board that has two newly appointed board members. There's been some turnover in the administration. However, they've taken this opportunity to look at how they might change some of the processes and improve those programs. There's a lot of enthusiasm building as the events are being lined out for this year. Miranda, who is newly employed with Economic Development, the past, what, four months, six months? Miranda's been very helpful in assisting them with promotions and helping them update their website, and it looks really great. Not sure that it's gone live yet, but we'll be sure to let you all know. I think you'll notice. Thankfully, before Miranda was available to help them with that, previous Commissioner, Susan Brown, has been very helpful in helping the Events Center stay afloat, doing their strategic plan, helping with the website, and a diverse myriad of services that they just didn't have the capacity to fill. So, I'm extremely grateful to Commissioner Brown for filling that gap. I'm also grateful to Parks Administration, Commissioner Pash, Finance, Human Resources, and County Council, because the amount of support that the Events Center has received from the counties has helped a lot, and I'm appreciative for that partnership, and I expect that that's going to grow. Food Securities Summit, we have that scheduled for February 20th in partnership with United Way's Empty Bulls Event. Commissioner Boyce had said, hey, this hasn't happened in a long time, it's overdue. And I said, okay, let's do this. And then, initially, we were scheduling that for the end of January, but found the opportunity to partner with United Way in that. And so, we will be holding that summit in South County on the 20th of February. Well, let's see, TLT and Promotions Committee Updates from Miranda. There have been 157 accounts registered with TLT, and this month is the first month that collections will come in for this past quarter. It's the first quarter, and so it'll be interesting to see how that is disseminated and gives us kind of a base to move on from here. The Tourism Promotions Committee, so Miranda has been spearheading and leading that group, and it's a great group, and they're really excited, dedicated, and Miranda's done a really nice job with steering the direction on that. Right now, they're working on Tourism Resource Asset Inventory, and so that's really exciting, because that's going to help us map what's available, where, and what we can do to enhance those assets already available. The meetings are the first Wednesday of the month. The public's invited to attend, and they're actually encouraged. Information is available on the website if you want to know more. Business licenses. So, Miranda and I spend a lot of time driving the backroads and finding those businesses that might not know the business license had been implemented. And so, we found a total of 400 businesses in unincorporated Curry County, of which 142 have registered for business licenses. So, we are very excited about this, because it's going to give us the opportunity to further expand resources and availability of shared workspace, business retention and expansion for those businesses we didn't otherwise know existed. And lastly, Miranda did join the board for Gold Beach Main Street, so that was really exciting, a good opportunity for her. They had sent her on a trip with the support of the county for Oregon Main Street events, and she came back ready to go, and so she got her feet wet in tourism, and is excited to hit the ground running with a love of culture and history. I think she's really going to do a great job.
I have a question about that. So, the county spent money for her position at Gold Beach Main Street?
No, actually, Gold Beach Main Street paid. They've got grant funding-
Okay.
-to pay for her attendance.
Good. It sounded like you said, we sent her on a trip with support of the county, but it-
Not financial support.
Thank you. Good, all right. Just checking.
Just a couple of questions. I'm looking at some of the numbers here, and-
Were you finished? I didn't- Yeah. Okay, good.
I thought you were finished.
Just wait. Here we go.
I'm done.
You are done.
I'm going to the Housing Summit in Salem tomorrow.
And that-
Now I'm done.
I emailed you, that is very good news, and I'm quite relieved that you are going to be there and take that time and expense and effort, and that's very anxious to hear your report back, and I get to stay in the office. Thank you. Mr. Gold? Mr. Gold?
Okay, just a couple of questions on some of your numbers. For the TLT, I noticed you said 157 are registered, which is good. Are we sure that that's all or...?
We're not sure, but Miranda and Dave Fortman have worked with Julie to create a plan for follow-up on those businesses that have not registered.
Basically, what we're doing is the first, so you get a notice, you know, it's been in the paper. We've paid for ads. It's been social media. We had postcards made and handed out. Been at, provided information at at least one event. So what happens is people have, a lot of people right away came out of the gate and said, yes, I have a business or I have a lodging establishment and they registered their properties. Now what happens is the second go-around, Miranda will send a second letter to them now. And if we don't hear from them, the third is the three strikes, you're out rule where if they don't respond to the second letter, then it gets referred to code enforcement to start his enforcement action on them.
Okay. And then the second question, another numbers question, business licenses. There's a deadline, right? What's the deadline?
So...
The first deadline has passed.
Yeah, we're four months into the program. And so now we're coming up to the point where if they haven't registered, there's... I think what's happened is they see, oh, I haven't registered, but if I wait the three months, the six-month marker, they only have to pay $50. So I think that's what we're seeing come trickling in. Yeah.
This month, they'll get the, just like the TLT, they'll get that second notice of all the ones we're aware of. And like I said, we have our own inventory. So the first time, they all got letters and we only had a portion respond. So now the remainder get their second letter. And again, if they don't respond, then it gets referred to code enforcement.
Okay, so we haven't even hit half yet. There's 400 businesses, but only 142 are registered.
That's right.
So that's kind of concerning.
It is.
It is. And I think that, I think we'll find a few more come in when Miranda sends the second letter. But to be honest with you, I believe that we're going to get the biggest response when we get code enforcement involved, which is very unfortunate because we did have people that were, I understand this program. I think this is great. I support it. They responded right away. They did what they were supposed to. You know, it's not fair to the ones that comply to not follow up with the other ones. So like I said, we're going to try the soft approach. You know, this is the first year of the program.
Well, I think that's important.
But we also have that three strikes, you're out rule or approach that says if they don't respond after Miranda's next letter, they're going to be referred to code enforcement.
And the $50 versus the $100, that bothers me. They're doing this deliberately to... I totally understand saving money, but...
Yeah, I don't know if that's what they're doing.
So my proposal is we had initially sent out notices to every business that we had logged in the mail with the application and the registration requirements so that it was pretty thorough and if they had any questions, they could contact us. I feel like another piece of mail is going to cost a lot of money. It's not in my budget. And I feel that maybe email approach is a little different and might get to them, whereas the mail might not be. And then if it takes a face-to-face visit, I think sometimes when that happens, people put a face to the program and they might be a little more open-minded and say, yeah, you're right. I just haven't gotten around to it. And that gives us the opportunity to meet with them face-to-face and say, let's help you out.
Great approach. Great approach.
Okay, just as long as we're moving towards compliance.
So we...
Anything else?
Oh, thank you very much, Summer.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Hey, the quarterly reports, I don't know whose idea this was, but it is, I think, very good and I'm happy to get these reports. It's a good system and it's good for the citizens to hear. We have about six minutes and so I'd like to call up Roadmaster Christensen and then we're going to have an 11 o'clock to public hearings. So up to the podium, sir. Hi. What's that?
Morning, Commissioners. Richard Christensen, Curry County Roadmaster. I'm here today with Miranda Gray of South Coast Watershed Council on a fish pipe project. This is a FEMA project that started out as a repair, but working with FEMA this summer on their site visit to the site, they recommended the pipe be completely replaced and upgraded to a fish pipe as its critical fish habitat. So moving forward through the process, this pipe is two-thirds through its life and instead of repairing it, it's going to go from a 60-inch pipe to 128-inch pipe.
Wow.
And to allow fish passage. And FEMA will cover 75% of this cost. In 10 to 20, or 10 to 20 years max, we're going to have to replace this anyway at our full cost. This project currently is $290,000, which includes all the engineering, inspection, contracts, permits, and construction costs. And so this cost was not in my budget this year, but I believe we can absorb it because we have cost savings in other projects. And this cost for engineering will be $62,500. And we plan to go out to bid in spring if you approve this project for construction this summer. So it's basically a $300,000 project. Once we're done, FEMA is going to pay $225,000 of this project in the county. Road Department will be paying about $75,000 at the end of the day. And I'd like to introduce Miranda Gray because they did a letter of support to FEMA for this project, but also too, they have a small grant funding opportunities that might help offset our $75,000 cost.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. As Richard said, I'm Miranda Gray. I coordinate the South Coast Watershed Council. And I'm here to support Richard's proposal, the county's proposal for this fish passage culvert replacement. And as he also mentioned, we would be contributing $15,000 financial support to offset some of those county costs. We implemented a similar project back in 2012 just upstream of this project. So we think it would complement this one nicely. And we'd look to do some restoration activities, including some riparian plantings, erosion control, and possibly even some grade control upstream of that culvert so it wouldn't compromise that project that we put in in 2012. We would also coordinate with ODFW and NOAA Fisheries to make sure that culvert meets fish passage requirements. So it would likely be an embedded culvert that has a natural stream bottom. So it's not creating any more of a barrier to aquatic organism passage than a natural stream channel would. And this is a really common, cost-effective way to restore habitat for fish. And we have a lot of previous experience with these types of restoration projects to show for it. So yeah, we fully endorse the project and think it would be a great way to partner with the county.
So thank you very much for that contribution. That's a lot of funds. So you get Curry Watershed and Curry Road Department together. That's a good mix.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good things will happen, especially for our fish.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you.
It's important.
Rich, you're looking at getting the task order approved and then when it comes time for the actual expense, the $75,000, would that be in this fiscal year or would that be for next fiscal year?
Uh, $62,500, most of it will be this, two-thirds of it will be this fiscal year for the engineering and contract docs. And then the other, you know, $20,000 or so would be part of the $220,000 project that I'll put in next fiscal year's budget. So in the road department budget for, we'll have a 200, about quarter million dollars in the budget for this project, which FEMA will reimburse once it's completed.
Commissioner Gold?
So you mentioned that you had some cost savings in other areas. Will those cost savings help in going towards this or would they cover all of this?
I believe so. I'll have that answer for sure for my budget presentation next week on the 22nd.
And one last question. You mentioned that the pipe was already...
60.
Was it 60% gone or...?
Yeah, two-thirds. So 60, you know, 70% gone. And I mean, it's a good pipe. It'd last for sure 10 years maybe, but for sure 20 years, we'd be replacing it at full cost.
Which would probably be higher.
Which would probably be higher.
Yeah, I think we'd be stupid not to approve this, in my opinion.
Well, and so we have the money now. And this pipe, when we're done with it, well, it should last us another 60 years. And so for the foreseeable future, we won't have any issues there.
Well, and we're not guaranteed that FEMA is going to pay the cost in 10 years if we have to replace it.
Do you like to make a motion?
Yes. Let me make a motion to approve the task order 17 for the Cedar Culvert.
I'll second.
A question for discussion?
Yes. Council Huddle?
Thanks. So this action item, they're agreeing, we're agreeing to spend 62 roughly, plus or minus 1,000 to engineer this. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you mentioned that we have the FEMA reimbursement. Do we have, have we got the agreement with FEMA? Have we got it in writing from FEMA, I guess, or who, where is that promise? Where is that in the pipeline as far as getting the assurances nailed down there? I'm just...
That's a good question. And FEMA does not do that. But what they do is say that they have very strong support for this and they want to see this happen. And so they verbally have made a commitment, but not in writing.
So we would essentially be making some application to them after we do the project to get reimbursed? Is it a reimbursement grant? Again, I'm just trying to...
Right. We have already completed an application and they have, which was for a repair.
Sure.
And they've pushed us into a full compliance into a fish pipe.
Thank you. All right.
It was more or less their idea?
Yes.
Okay, good.
How much would the repair cost?
If it was on the county's dime and it was my team doing that repair, we'd probably do a cement blanket and a joint repair, probably $50,000.
Okay, so we're talking $12,000 difference?
We're talking, yeah, we're talking a lot, but we're also talking about a pipe that in the future, when it fails, the county will have a $300,000, $400,000 bill.
So my motion stands. The second's there.
The amendment seconded that we approve this joint project. So you want to take a roll call, Mr. Jesuit?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Thank you.
Council Huddle, where are we now in public hearings?
Thanks. We're about ready to go with the public hearings. It's, I'm wondering if, before we do the public hearings, just because we might forget, we amended the agenda to take some items off of the consent agenda, but there were still items remaining on the consent agenda that would just need a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda without any discussion. Then John Jesuit could check that off his list.
Good catch.
I do think, I think we also have to go back to 4D, so we've skipped quite a few things right here. So let's just do the public hearing and then go back to the original ordering.
Thank you.
Let's clarify what we are trying to...
What we're going to do is take the public hearings more or less out of order because of their 11 o'clock notice time and then we'll go back to the regular agenda, starting with consent perhaps or...
Starting with presentations.
Very good. Oh, we haven't even done the...
We haven't finished the presentation.
Yeah, got it. Okay. So we'll take the, take the public hearings out of order?
Do we have a consensus on that? Yeah?
That's fine.
Okay.
So that would be 7A, Resolution Regarding Fair Housing. John Huddle, County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have, we were awarded a grant for the Brookings Head Start Project. And like any grant, there are conditions that local government does to comply with the grant. And one of those conditions is that we need to do two resolutions to support public housing in the county. We did one and so this is our second. And this is a fair housing resolution. And it says basically, whereas Curry County is certified in its grant contract that we will comply with requirements of Title A of the Civil Rights Act, properly known as the Fair Housing Act, and will take action to affirmatively further fair housing and that it's our policy to encourage government-assisted housing as a source of affordable, safe, and sanitary housing opportunities for persons of lower, middle, and fixed incomes. And then we have publicly advertised this. We put it in the reporter and the pilot. And so that's really all I have. So those are the technical details. We've advertised it to open the public hearing to see if there's anyone who wants to comment for or against this and then make a motion to approve.
Any comment? Connie, Ms. Hunter, please come up.
That's a no-brainer to pass this, to get the grant. But I like seeing us apply for grants. I like seeing the fact that Curry County is addressing the housing issues and also mental health issues and wraparound services somewhere down the pike for housing. But it's a no-brainer and I just wanted to thank Curry County in general and in particular Commissioner Court Boyce and also other staff like Julie and Summer for their work on the housing task force. Thank you.
And you drove all the way from Brookings?
To hear and to say. You know what? Somebody made two mistakes along the way. They gave women the right to vote and they allow for public comments at meetings. I'm showing up.
I never would have thought I'd hear you say that was a mistake.
I'm joking. That's a joke. That was a female humor. Anyway, my point is, good job, awesome. Let's get it done.
Thank you again. So public hearing is 7B, cell of...
Oh, sorry. Didn't you close the public hearing on this matter and then take a vote on this matter, please?
Well, I did see Mr. Barnes. You're okay? Okay? So we need that today. So we'll close that, officially close that hearing.
Sure. And then have a motion to approve the resolution, please.
I move we approve the resolution regarding fair housing.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded for the approval of this housing resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Jesuit.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
So the next one is 7B. Are we ready for that? Do we have to wait till 11:15?
Technically, we should wait till 11:15.
Yeah, okay.
So let's go back to the agenda with item 4D would be the next one.
That's going to take a while.
No, so if you don't mind, I'll just start with that. So 4D is state-of-the-county video. And if you look at the agenda routing slip, it talks about how annually the chair, the outgoing chair, has to do a state-of-the-county address. Normally, it's in writing. This chair has chose to do a video and written format. And the agenda routing slip explains that the video will air at the end of the meeting so people didn't have to sit through it because it is pretty long. It's about 40 minutes long. So at the end of the meeting, we'll play the video and we'll also post the letter, which is the same content as the video on the county website. So that's what we had for that matter.
Will that video be available then for reviewing on our county channel?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So why don't we take a break till 11:15? Just a quick break?
Or we could, or we could just continue with the consent agenda.
How long, how much time do you need?
Consent agenda will go pretty quick. So what we have is appoint one member to the compensation board. You have that information in front of you. And then it is to approve the job description for the Public Health Administrator. And note, there was a correction in the job description on who they report to. And then the third thing under consent agenda was to approve the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant for planning projects. Ms. Crockett received a small grant from DLCD for that. So we would just like the board to approve those three items on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that. Are we ready for a roll call, Mr. Jesuit?
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Okay, so if, do you mind if I keep going?
Oh, no, you're doing great.
So under discussion action items, then the next thing we had, we already took A, but B would be the final order on the Adams Appeal, which was the matter that the board heard at the last meeting. They have to take final action on that. So they have the order in front of you. So Ms. Crockett is just looking for affirmation of that, what was decided. So we would just need a motion to approve that order if the board's willing to do that.
See, I opposed that.
You're, that's correct. So we probably should... Council Huddle, legally, is there a time limit we have to worry about with approving that order? Or can we relay that or put that over to the next meeting?
We can put this over. We can put this over to, by, I'm assuming we're going to the twenty-second a week?
Yes.
No, all we have is a workshop.
Well, we could structure the workshop so that there's meeting time in front of it to approve that.
Thank you. Yes, this can be continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
So, do, we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I move we continue this item, the Adams Appeal, until, uh, the next meeting, which is January twenty-second, was it?
Second. So, that, uh, continuing, or tabling would be, uh, for January twenty-second. Can we do a roll call, please, on that motion?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Doing good.
All right, the next one would be the fee waiver for the Sixes Fire Department. What we have is the fire department has a very low budget, a small budget. It's thirteen thousand dollars, and they need some land to expand onto. So, they do have someone who is willing to, um, either give or sell them some land. Um, the portion they would be acquiring would be about twelve acres out of a much larger piece. And in order to acquire that land, they actually need to, um, do, go through a planning process. I believe that the planning director is processing it as a property line adjustment. The fee for that is two thousand dollars. Because they are a special district or another unit of government, and due to their limited budget, they are asking the board to waive that fee. So, we would need approval from the board to waive that fee.
My only concern about this is would we be setting a precedent by waiving fees?
And I think that's something for the board definitely to consider. You know, there are some factors here. One is, um, the way their property is set up right now, they really can't expand unless they cross over the road and acquire this property. So, it's kind of a unique situation in how it's being done. Um, they also have a very small budget compared to other special districts.
Oh, I know. I'm, I'm just wondering if we should have some sort of a policy to determine when we could, you know...
If I may?
Exempt the fees.
Let's just take it case-by-case basis. I'm so happy to hear you mention that they have a very small budget. This guy right here has been there for years. He's an absolute legend. Um, and I just can't say enough good about what they're, they've been working on this for two years, and they are so excited about getting this piece of property to, to, um, reinforce their whole efforts up there. And they basically are from, almost from Langless to the city of Port Orford. And so, uh, I'm just gonna ask, I'm not concerned about future waiving, um, because they, they need all the support, encouragement, and, uh, funding that they can possibly get. So, this is just a huge thing for them.
Oh, listen, I'm not opposed to it at all. In fact, I'm the head of a, a fire department that has next to nothing also. But I'm just concerned that if we decide to take it on a case-by-case basis, I'm fine with that. But I just want to make sure that everybody's not gonna come and ask for an exemption.
I think that...
Once you set that precedent, it's like, so-and-so got it, why don't I get it?
Yeah, and I think just based on our conversation, you know, it's best we do it a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
So, if we do encounter it again, I think we just need to remember this conversation and say, hey, we need to look at the details of each one independently.
Okay.
So, by the way, this is Chief Wayne.
Then I will make a motion to do the fee waiver.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold. I will second that motion.
Just for the record, too, I want to let you know that Director Crockett was supportive of waiving the fee.
Thank you again for that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Since we have two minutes left, um, so the Parks Liaison was pulled off, number E was pulled off to, um, the next meeting, um, or future meeting. But we have F, which is approve the contract with Eric Feliciano for Media Services. So, I just, um, reminder the board, our contract with Brandt Media, we terminated that. It ended December thirty-first. Um, Mr. Feliciano was working for Brandt Media. He has been the one recording our meetings. He is willing to contract with us to continue to provide that service. Uh, the cost savings is about half. So, his hourly rate is, um, about half of what Brandt Media was charging us. Um, the contract before you, I did put that the county was waiving the right for the insurance, so hopefully you're okay with that. Um, Mr. Felis, Feliciano is operating out of our room and with our equipment, so I, um, felt that there wasn't as much of an insurance concern as possible. Um, Council Huddle did, in a message to me, indicate that the board has the right to, to waive that insurance. So, the contract before you does have that waiver in it, saying it's waived. So, um, if there's no objections to that, we'd like you to approve that, and also backdate it to January eighth, which is when Mr. Feliciano, uh, started recording, um, after the contract had expired.
It's, uh, you're acting vice chair, so it's appropriate for you to make, keep making the motions.
I don't have a problem with that. I move that we approve Eric Feliciano contract. And I think I said that name wrong. Feliciano, oh.
Very good. Second on that motion. Roll call, Mr. Jesuit.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Welcome, Mr. Feliciano. Great.
So, now let's move forward with the eleven fifteen public hearing.
That's amazing. So, we're going back, back to, uh, public hearings, sell of certain county-owned properties. Uh, Director of Curry Operations, Julie Schmelzer.
Yes, so this is a public hearing on the county's intent to sell some properties to, um, three different parties. Um, we have advertised the sale in the newspaper. This is the public hearing on it. And, um, real quickly, I'll just read the, um, order that's before you. Whereas Curry County is the fee owner of certain parcels of real property described in Exhibit A attached here, too, with real properties by Order Number Two Zero Seven Seven Nine dated December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, were designated and set aside as county forests, public parks, or recreational areas pursuant to ORS Two Seventy-Five Point Three Two O. And whereas the real properties described in Exhibit A were acquired by the county for foreclosure of delinquent tax liens or otherwise, and whereas on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty, following due and proper notice per ORS Two Seventy-Five Point Three Three O, parent three parent, the Curry County Board of Commissioners held a public hearing in the matter of alienation, sale, conveyance, or exchange of the said properties. And whereas at the conclusion of said public hearing, under the authority granted in ORS Two Seventy-Five Point Three Three O, the board determined and found that all statutory legal requirements have been met. It is in the public's best interest to alienate, sell, convey, or exchange the lands set aside for forest, public parks, or recreational areas as described in Exhibit A attached here, too. And the lands set aside can be sold at public or private sale, or other lands may be taken in exchange and set aside for forest, public parks, or recreation purposes. And if the board agrees with this, and after, after we hear from the public, if there's no objection, the board agrees to it, that we would then have an order saying that the sale would proceed. Um, just for, um, information purposes, on Exhibit, Exhibit A, what we have are two very small parcels down in, they're undeveloped parcels. They're basically, uh, slopes on the side of a lot that we would be selling to Connie Elmer, that would be in the Brookings area. Each of those parcels would sell for about two hundred fifty, would sell for two hundred fifty dollars. We also have a property up in the Florist Lake area that would be sold to Carol Backinson. That would be for two thousand dollars. And another property up in the Florist Lake area that would be sold to Morgan Garman and Sharon Jensen for eight thousand dollars. These people have paid the, um, application fees, and we have all the information we need from them. So, if, um, like I said, after public comment, if the board decides to go ahead with this, we would proceed with collecting the sale price and actually proceeding with the deed.
So, we're opening to public comment? What's the two words, seeing none? So, we can close the public hearing? Are you okay, man? So, we need a motion now?
So, I move that we approve the sale of certain county-owned properties by private sale, and they were listed above.
Second. Good work. Any other discussion, by the way? Roll call, Staff Jesuit.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
So, at this point, um, Mr., or Commissioner Boyce, we'd want, or Chair, Vice Chair, however we interacted today, um, we'd want to go back to those items that were pulled from the consent agenda and moved to the discussion, which is the higher order for the accounting clerk, and then the two positions for the clerk's office.
Open discussion. Who wants to go first?
If I can just make an observation, maybe, to start the conversation. So, in looking at these ones for the clerk's office, I think, again, the, the title of it, I think, was very misleading. It said promotion, which is something we don't, we don't do, right? We have, we have a freeze. We don't do step increases. You don't promote somebody. You don't just give them more money. Now, if this is, um, actually moving them into a different position, that is something different. And that is what this looks like it's doing. So, starting with the first one, the M bros, it looks like what happened there is there was a person, and they were actually hired as a department specialist two, and they want to move that person into a deputy clerk one position. So, um, really not a promotion, but more of a, um, it's semantics, really. It's, the person, of course, is getting about three hundred dollars more, or about five hundred dollars more a month in salary, but it's really transferring them to a different position.
So, I'm looking for...
So, will their duties be changed?
Excuse me? Go ahead, please.
You were looking for a motion, and I was kind of discussing first.
Okay. So, did you have a question? I, I want to address you first, if we can.
Yeah, that was my question. Will their duties change if...
And we talked about that earlier, so go ahead.
It's okay.
Clerk Colan, please.
Renee Colan, uh, county clerk for the record. So, again, this is the, this is taking an existing position and transfer them into another existing position, because that position was vacated when that person has accepted a job in your finance department.
So, the duties are changing?
Absolutely, yes. So, it's a completely different job description. I mean, totally different. Um, as you'll see, there, this position was, we, we filled it as a five. It's going to be moving into a seven, which is the position that we have right now that's being vacated. So, it's in the budget. It's been approved, and it's just filling the position that's been vacated. And again, I apologize for having the order say promotion. I agree with, uh, Director Schmelzer that it's a fill of vacancy, which might have resolved this at the beginning.
You don't have to apologize. We're, we're a small county. We're trying to get our work done.
So, I'd really appreciate you. I recommend approving that one.
Yeah, and in this case, duties, if I may, duties and responsibility, what's the fancy term, are not mutually exclusive. I mean, it's, it's, it's additional responsibilities. I've been assured of that. And so, that was my only concern.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I move to approve the promotion of, or excuse me, not promotion, the change of class of the employee in the clerk's office. Now, do we have two of those?
That one was for, uh, the clerk deputy one of Marcy Brosey. The other one was then a promotion for our deputy clerk two to move into the deputy clerk, the deputy clerk one into the deputy clerk two, to help compensate for these changes that we're having. But I understand where you're going.
But again, not a promotion as this person is just getting a raise.
I've got to get rid of that word.
I, I think the orders, I think the board, if the board is inclined to approve these, I think we should make sure that language is cleaned up on there a little bit, because I don't want the public misled to think that we're just giving employees promotions or raises when we actually have a step increase. I think it's, um, a little misleading to the other employees that have been told, no, you can't get an increase. There's no promotions right now. So, let's, um, just make sure we clean that up on the order before it's signed, if the board is inclined to approve them today.
So, when I make this motion, can I make it for both positions?
Yes.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the change of positions in the recorder office.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, and I will, uh, second that motion. Any more discussion? Okay. You're on deck.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other one that was moved over there was the higher order for the accounting clerk. And that is the position that, um, Clerk Colan was referring to was vacated in her office. So, um, in, it was about July or August when, um, Chair Pash, myself, Finance Director Sherlin Harvey, Julie Swift from HR and Payroll, and Sina Clerk, uh, or Sina Crook, the accounting clerk had, um, accounts payable clerk had met. And we had talked about the workload and the backlog, and how it's been difficult to get work done, because there's so much, and it's so backed up. Um, there's a difficult time processing stuff in there due to the amount of work. So, uh, we had asked what we could do to help, and, um, the recommendation at that time, or the discussion at that time, was we really needed to get someone in there to help with the accounts payable. So, um, what this is, is we had, the board had approved the job description several months ago. It actually, um, was posted internally to see if employees were interested. Uh, that's something we have to do with the union. We have to post it internally. And we actually had two people apply for it, and the one that, um, was offered the position was in the clerk's office. She's the one that would be hired for the, um, for the, the finance department. I was not part of the interview process. However, it was, I think there was, um, they felt very confident with the person's capabilities that she'd be able to help out in there.
Mr. Gold?
So, I, how'd you know I had a question? Um, this individual, okay, we're, we're looking at getting the final financials done. Will this individual be able to help with that process?
She wouldn't, um, my understanding, she would not be doing those financials. However, she would be doing a lot of the work that Sina is doing, so that Sina could move forward with other projects that she has. Um, and doing a lot of the filing, a lot of the data entry, and things that have just been put on hold, or items that are slowing down the process, the progress in that department.
Okay, so inadvertently, or whatever you want to say, that would be helping in that process?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will make a motion.
Thank you.
You have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, we've been back and forth on this, but I think we're really moving in the right direction, and I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be productive and, and a good approach. I might, I might change my mind on that, but right now, I'm feeling pretty confident and appreciate, um, more of the problems, plural, solving. So, that's all I have. If you would like to make a motion, Commissioner Gold.
Okay, we, or I would like to move that we appoint, um, the higher order for an accounting clerk.
Second. Any more discussion?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jesuit.
Chair Pash? Absent. Motion carried two to zero.
Now, we're back on track with number nine. Which is the director's report, and I do not have anything for you this week, so...
Are you sure?
I could talk for a long time about a lot of stuff, but no, let's just skip it for this week, so...
Okay. So, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Updates, if you would begin, please?
The only thing I'm concerned with is with the individual that came to talk about the, the noise in the port. And I would like to get approval to be able to write a letter that comes from all commissioners, because I think that would hold more sway. So, I don't know whether we need a formal motion or just an agreement to do that.
I don't think so. If you, I, I can't imagine the board, in a general sense, would want to change much of what you...
So, you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Of course, I'll bring the letter forth before you sign it.
I don't mind doing a motion. I don't think we need one.
I think we can just give a direction based on consensus of the board.
Okay, I just don't want to do something that's outside of my purview, so... That's all I have.
I got thirty-two minutes.
No, no, you don't.
We have the exec session.
We have other stuff to get to.
What's that?
We have the executive session.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then we have to come back and do the higher order under twelve A, and we have to do the video yet.
Is that forty minutes?
It's forty minutes.
Oh!
So, you really have minus eight minutes.
Let's see here. Got a nice email from, uh, Teresa Hewitt from the Port Orford Beacon in Port Orford. The Dawls, if anybody's interested, um, made the top five of, on the Small Business Resolution for, uh, the whole United States. And so, the, the comment she made is, please get the word out to vote for them, through the Curry citi, from the Curry citizens. And then she sent me a link, and I think we have it up here, or, we'll see. And then she sent me a link, and I think we have it up here, or, we'll see. It'll be on my website. Anyway, some good lessons, the national exposure for Oregon. Encourage people to watch this online program. Get Currie County to learn what they can. Amazing number of people who don't know how to make change. This show would be helpful. Quick report, you know, we've talked about, we're hearing some citizens say, hey, the money that's going out, we, I, with your help, I outlined some of the issues that we, the surprises, I'm hoping 2020 doesn't have a lot of additional similar 10, 50, $100,000, the tower's $800,000 surprises. I really am moving with a lot of confidence that we are overcoming this. So, yeah, again, I'm hoping we don't have a lot of surprises for 2020. But if we keep going this way, and we're unable to find additional revenues and cut costs, I may ask some help to promote, just helping the citizens recognize and understand mandated services, and what, what part of our County programs are not mandated. I'm not predicting that, I just, it's just something that I think is very good information. And of course, I want to bring everything back to the strategic plan, and I'm still enthused about that. Real quick on House Bill 2020, as the short session goes into legislature. Here's how it could affect our county on just sheer expenses due to the energy relation, you know, the energy expenditures from a variety of ways. How much gasoline would the county consume in a year? And how would that, if it was 20 or 30 cents per gallon, on the carbon tax? It's, it could be absolutely devastating to rural Oregon. Do the gasoline, do the diesel, LP and NG? You know, we're paying some months $6,000 for electricity. And if the price of electricity goes up, how that could affect rural county, how in particular, of course, it could affect us. How many miles driven by emergency services and law enforcement? How many miles of chip seal, asphalt, and oil did we take care of through our road department? The point is, the amount of additional expense that this could mean for us is going to require, I'm very thankful to have both Senator Hurd and Representative Brock Smith at the Capitol, and they'll be reporting to me. And I don't know that in the short session, I've spent a lot of time up there, but I am going to speak out for Currie County and against this carbon tax bill, which appears is going to get a lot of momentum, even in this short session. I hope it is delayed, but I am very concerned, and I'm going to be really tuned into that. Two more quick things here. Dan Bratton has been selected as the Oregon State Ambulance Association Director, President. And that's a really big plus for Currie County. He and Joe Gregorio have about 60 employees. Proud time for, for us. And I, in listening on the Monday meeting of the Public Safety Coordinating, excuse me, the Public Safety Program at the ALC, I warned all my commissioner friends up there, don't be thinking about recruiting him, because he's not leaving Currie County, he just runs an incredible program. So, it's a big plus for us. I went to the VVA last night, number 757, and the VFW. First on the Veterans of Foreign War, they're just south of the high school in Brookings. Somebody drove into the side of their building about three months ago, and they basically had to take a very limited insurance settlement. And so, they are really having a struggle. I just want to draw attention to the public, that if anyone wants to go down and meet with Rick Bremer, and, and, you know, at some point, I think it's going to have to be a volunteer repair, where it took out one bathroom and one large wall, and there's been break-ins since then. And, you know, the VFW just doesn't have enough money to deal with that. The VVA, the primary reason I was there was to say goodbye to Bill Farrell, who has served in Vietnam as a special forces, just an unbelievable human being. And some of the stories that he was able to communicate, since I met him four years ago, some of the things that he dealt with in combat, and protecting our country, sacrificing for our country. He, despite his time in Vietnam, he lived a great life, and he helped so many people in this county, in our communities. And then I was very happy to hear, I'm sorry, I mentioned to you about Jim Sealy, but I forgot to mention the summer. I know you both knew him pretty well. And so, if I could, with the board here, just have a moment of silence for Jim Sealy and Bill Farrell, and appreciate the opportunity to give honor to them and say an important goodbye. So, just a moment of silence. Thank you. And as far as Jim Sealy goes, he also served in Vietnam offshore. But what he has done for the South Coast, his heart, just like Bill Farrell, just a tremendous person, incredible human being, and he is really going to be missed. He was very good to Currie County. And it didn't really catch us as a surprise, but it did happen rather, rather quickly. That's all I have, thank you all.
So, at this time, we'll go into executive session, if there's nothing else. Pressure boys.
So, we're going to recess and go into executive session? Do you want me to quote the numbers? Is that appropriate? Executive session, Oregon 192.6602.
Yep, that's 2A, which would be retention or hiring of a county individual agent or employee. D is labor negotiations, and F and H is litigation and confidential information.
Very good. Thank you, Castle Huddle.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Currie County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Currie County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So, we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique, because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food, and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so, now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now, we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small. So, we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know who anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So, we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So, we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So, now, people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days, because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now, we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard, it's going to take a long time. So, roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border. 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the... 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain, and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf, but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges, or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy, and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness, or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters, they were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rhododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings, or just before dusk, are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing, or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end, and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed, dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway, are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village, and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Banden tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Banden. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shiny stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Banden. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches, or go to the headlands, and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire. Prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done, so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr., and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community. Those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned, as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity, to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land, so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires, specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart, because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water, because I have told them that we're all born in water, we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans, because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Immoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could hear. He and I stood on the riverbank, bracing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers, because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious, and often preventable, problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the sound
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the ONC Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure. Our ONC Board is of the 18 counties in Oregon that are part of the ONC lands on their BLM, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The ONC Act of 1937 is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed, do they match up with the congressional mandate of the ONC Act? And how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forest in different areas? Are these things that come up each month?
Yes, well, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the ONC lands board, and we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of ONC. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit-down with two representatives of the BLM. And there's constantly, we work with BLM because actually the ONC lands are on BLM lands and that's our concern. Mainly, the ONC Board of Directors, which is a membership from all 18 counties. We always meet, I think it's bi-monthly, and then we have an annual meeting. And it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health, Jobs, and County Services, that the money coming from the sale of timber on ONC lands goes through the federal government. They take their share out of it and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services such as law enforcement, schools. There's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for, but it's from the sale of timber on the ONC lands. ONC lands goes way back to 1937 with the ONC 1937 ONC Congressional Act and the ONC Act of 1937. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional act. That remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we want to get back to.
Hi there. I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. I'm a member of the ONC Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy. I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook Creamery, but also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue, and that's very important. But one side of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with all timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs. These are fully benefited jobs. Whereas on the tourism side, the income is about a third of what we would consider a family wage job, and there are also no benefits with those. So timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect. Keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Maine from Coos County, Oregon, and we've had the monthly meeting of ONC lands here. And Mr. Maine, Commissioner Maine, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the ONC lands board.
I am the Vice President of the ONC Association of Oregon State Counties. It consists of 18 ONC counties, western Oregon counties. And we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those ONC lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those 18 ONC counties. For no other reason, Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the counties should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates, like in my county, would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay. So you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you. With the natural resource base that this state has, I've spent, or spending better than half of my time as a county commissioner on those issues, fire management, public lands management, certainly natural resources, all of those. And so I'm often reminded that 250 years ago, the generations that came before us when they got here to Oregon, include northern California, they found the greatest forest in all of North America, that produced the greatest watersheds, that produced the most pristine rivers, that give us the highest quality of salmonella that runs arguably on the planet.
It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop. And make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now?
Smile.
Smile?
Uh-huh.
This is so easy.
The sign doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leening, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by five to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Then we're going to the W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs.
Surprise you stayed back.
Jack Parr, Jack Finney.
Okay, welcome back all. We're just left executive session and back in regular session, so you wanted a motion to proceed as directed in executive session and do the hire order.
Okay, I move that we move forward as directed in the executive session.
I'm going to second that. Staff Jesuit, roll call please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash, absent. Motion carried two to zero.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Jesuit. It is 12:20.
We need the higher order.
Well, that's a separate motion.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I move that we approve the rehire order of a former employee for the Public Health Administrator.
I'll second that one too.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash. Motion carried two to one, as Chair Pash is absent.
Good job all.
Two to zero. Two to zero.
So it's 12:23. We're going to take a recess and come back at 1:30 and show the county to the state, state of the county video. I don't need to do the gavel, do I? We're officially adjourned. Recession, excuse me.
We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over 100 municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need to invest in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness.
Hi, my name is Christopher Pash.
...legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't...
I'm the Chair of the Curry County Board of Commissioners. In January of every year, the outgoing Chair presents a summary of the year's activities to the public. This is my first state of the county address, and I've decided to...
...rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal lands cover nearly one-third of the counties that handle the payment in lieu of taxes program to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping commonsense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Did you see Allison at lunch today? I'm going to text her. I'm going to text Allison.
Hey, hold up. Matt's calling me. Matt's calling me. Hey, we got the food and we're on our way right now.
Who's coming, bro?
You're the one who needs help.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective...
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these mega fires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect in many cases is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these mega fires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While mega fires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large, devastating mega fires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after mega fires is not only possible, but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-20th century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking, and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past 20 years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by mega fires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them, yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered, with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the National Forest down to the Protected Ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Cus Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively, then you can work into smaller groups knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind. in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds in offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered, but while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters, they were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic Old Town Commercial District along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reedspore is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reedspore hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Banden tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an Old Town await you in Banden. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum, you've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Banden, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr. and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water, we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too will remember your prayers, because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagine. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are, a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch, or a rock, or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective, and trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible, and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is, whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the ONC Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure. Our ONC Board is of the 18 counties in Oregon that are part of the ONC lands on their BLM, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The ONC Act of 1937 is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed, do they match up with the congressional mandate of the ONC Act, and how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forest in different areas, are these things that come up each month?
Yes, well, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the ONC Lands Board, and we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of ONC. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit-down with two representatives from the BLM, and there's constantly, we work with BLM, because actually, the ONC lands are on BLM lands, and that's our concern. Mainly, the ONC Board of Directors, which is a membership from all 18 counties. We always meet, I think it's bi-monthly, and then we have an annual meeting, and it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health, Jobs, and County Services, that the money coming from the sale of timber on ONC lands goes through the federal government. They take their share out of it and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services, such as law enforcement, schools. There's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for. But it's from the sale of timber on the ONC lands. ONC lands goes way back to 1937 with the 1937 ONC Congressional Act and the ONC Act of 1937. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional act. It remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we want to get back to.
Hi there. I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto, and I'm a member of the ONC Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy. I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook Creamery, but also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue, and that's very important. But one side of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with all timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs, these are fully benefited jobs, whereas on the tourism side, the income is about a third of what we would consider a family wage job, and there are also no benefits with those. So timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect. Keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Maine from Coos County, Oregon, and we've had the monthly meeting of ONC lands here. And Mr. Maine, Commissioner Maine, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the ONC Lands Board.
I am the Vice President of the ONC Association of ONC Counties. Consists of 18 ONC counties, western-oriented counties. And we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those ONC lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those 18 ONC counties. For no other reason, Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the counties should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates, like in my county, would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay. So you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you. With the natural resource base that this state has, I've spent, or spending better than half of my time as a county commissioner on those issues, fire management, public lands management, certainly natural resources, all of those. And so, I'm often reminded that 250 years ago, the generations that came before us, when they got here to Oregon, include Northern California, they found the greatest forest in all of North America, that produced the greatest watersheds, that produced the most pristine rivers, that give us the highest quality of salmonella that runs arguably
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile?
Uh-huh.
Sign that doesn't have a writer on it, so we take our first test at this close and speed.
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car, and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues, like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government, and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair, or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities, like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the US and impact 69% of Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping commonsense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
...scientist, so.
That's good.
The guy was really...
Here we go, guys.
Science.
Here we go.
Oh, do we have this, JJ?
Welcome back, everyone. January 15th, 2020. It is 1:30. We're going to reconvene here and proudly display the 2019 State of the County Address. Chair, Commission Chair, Chris Pash.
Hi, my name is Christopher Pash, and I am the Chair of the Curry County Board of Commissioners. In January of every year, the outgoing chair presents a summary of the year's activities to the public. This is my first State of the County Address, and I've decided to do things a little differently and share my address with you in this video format. My fellow commissioners, our Vice Chair Court Boyce, and Commissioner Sue Gold. Together as a board, this year, we have made some significant strides, but we acknowledge there is still a lot of work left to do. One of the first matters that this board was faced with was a failing emergency communication system, and we had to decide how to fund a new microwave tower grid to provide for communications. Money had never been set aside for this, and the board was left with a decision as to whether to take money from the road fund or not have emergency communication towers for our law enforcement and our first responders. For obvious reasons, money was taken from the road fund to pay for the towers. The new towers were approved at a cost of approximately $800,000. This emergency situation made it clear this board needed to ensure the county began capital improvement planning and find a way to develop a contingency fund. At the time, little did we know the towers were going to be the first of several unexpected expenses that were not addressed in a capital improvement plan. Also in January, the board brought back the former Director of Administration and Economic Development, Julie Schmelzer. As our new Director of Operations, Julie's skill set in intergovernmental relations has allowed us to improve services while still saving money. Julie replaced the former county administrator and assumed some of the duties of the county Community Development Director as well. One thing this county has heard repeatedly over the last few years was there were too many people in charge and not enough worker bees. As a result, this board reorganized several departments into one large department. The board combined the former Community Development Department, once known as the Planning Department, the Building Safety Department, Surveyor's Office, Parks Department, Emergency Management Office, and the recently created Code Enforcement Division, all into the new expanded Community Development Department. That new department has also co-located to improve our services and has begun scanning its documents to improve its efficiency. Administrative staff is shared, as is the cost, by all the divisions within the department, reducing some overhead expenses. Somewhat controversial, the board reinstated pay for the commissioners. Accrable pay has helped ensure accountability and resulted in commissioners being in the office full-time and doing more than just participating in meetings. The current board has taken on tough conversations, like the possibility of combining special districts or questioning special districts on their spending. They have also encouraged the various school districts to work together and share ideas and resources, lobbied for more effective fire suppression, worked with the fire chief from Gold Beach to secure funding for a fire and emergency training facility, fought for federal help to dredge our rivers, and lobbied for improved services for our veterans, and are also addressing fishery issues that have grossly damaged our tourism economy. The fisheries issue also affects neighboring Josephine and Jackson Counties. We are presently working with Josephine County and a consultant to encourage the United States Army Corps of Engineers to fulfill their commitments regarding the number of fish that were to be released into the river when the dam in Jackson County was built. This board has also reinstated the Economic Development and Tourism Program and brought back Summer Matheson, formerly in the board's office, to run that program. Her program was also incorporated into the new Community Development Department. The county receives lottery funds for this position, so it was a logical choice to reinstate the program and work towards improving our economy. Ms. Madison is working with others on a micro-enterprise program, a business incubator proposal, and has made significant strides in developing youth education opportunities and has been working on a program whereby all students would receive job experience to prepare them for a career. The Citizen Revenue Task Force, which was formed under the previous board, proposed the new board proceed with a transient lodging tax for the unincorporated areas of the county. That tax was approved by the voters in May. As a result, the board had to hire a new position to collect the tax and administer the program. If revenues are as projected by the task force, the tax revenue will cover the cost of the position. The new staff person, Miranda Plagie, also works with the new Promotions Committee on how to improve tourism and has been helping Gold Beach Main Street with some promotional projects. The board also appointed a new Budget Committee this past year. Although criticized for getting rid of experience, the board wanted fresh eyes to look at the financial situation. The board also has agreed to have an audit to determine where the county can do better with its finances, but that matter has been rolled over to 2020. Due to other pressing financial concerns, the board is focusing the coming year on resolving deficiencies found in our past annual audits and trying to resolve some of the past inconsistencies, which need to be cured before the new budget can be proposed. A new Finance Director was hired in July and has made the board aware of several concerns she has in her department and the way the county is conducting business. Some of the items brought to light is no one department head can check their budget at any given time to see where they are in their spending. The current budgeting process doesn't allow for forecasting. There's no formal process set up for capital improvement planning or asset management, and the financial and HR processes are very cumbersome and very time-consuming, oftentimes requiring five people to review one bill. She brought a proposal to the board for the county to modernize and use software that can help with budgeting and financial processes. The software will also help with transparency by allowing you, the public, to know what we are spending your money on and where we are in the budgeting process. She also had concerns with past budgets and found what she considers to be errors that impact our spending. She has recommended the board not proceed further with the budget until a third party has reviewed all the records and addressed any financial inconsistencies. She has also proposed other software that can help us recruit nationally, ensure our hiring processes are fair, and make for a more efficient way for hiring. Many people do not realize the money wasted in training employees. Over 50% of our team has been with the county for less than two years. We need to make sure we are hiring people that are qualified, require minimal training, and are integrated into the county system properly. The recommendations of the new Finance Director, Charlene Harvey, are seriously being considered, and some have already been approved. She has also expressed she does not believe the county needs a full-time Finance Director, and there should be other staffing changes in her department as well. She recommended the county contract for county accountant services rather than have someone on staff. There was no money budgeted for these changes, but the director is so adamant change is needed that she has offered to leave her position and the money for her position be utilized to purchase the software. This board has been diligent in providing more information to the public about its departments as well as services offered by other agencies. The board has required a quarterly report program whereby departments must provide the board quarterly reports at the public meeting so the public is aware of what is going on in the various departments. If you have not had the opportunity to view the meeting videos, I encourage you to do so in that the reports are not only informative, but they address the successes and concerns of our department directors. The board declared a state of emergency for the slides on Huskanogan on Highway 101, the Winchuck River Roadslide, Mountain Roadslide, the Gardner Ridge Washout, and the Hunter Creek area flooding. Thankfully, the governor supported our declaration, and we were able to get reimbursed for the work staff did as a result of these disasters. Our Parks Division was very proactive this year and proposed several new campgrounds, which have all been supported by the board. Currently, the Parks Division, led by Josh Hopkins, is self-funded and does not rely on the general fund. Josh has proposed acquiring some old Forest Service campgrounds on the Elk River, helping the port of Brookings Harbor with maintenance on their RV park, and proposed a new campground on the Social Security Bar in Brookings. None of these projects have been completed but are in negotiations. Also related to parks, the board approved swapping the state some undevelopable land along Floris Lake for some land along Highway 101 across from Pacific High School. That swap will allow the state park system to expand by 90 acres and result in the majority of the lake being protected from development. One of the big unknowns in a county budget is how much inmate medical services will cost. Once incarcerated, an inmate no longer has access to their federal benefits, which includes public health insurance. Therefore, those medical costs are borne by the county. It is almost impossible to accurately budget for these inmate needs, and this past year, the county paid $112,000 for inmate medical costs. Not only do the federal policies hurt counties, but they prevent inmates from accessing their doctors who have the inmate's medical record. The board has gone on record in support of the bills proposed by Senator Merkley to address the issue and are working with All Care on a pilot program to help address these concerns. Our sheriff, John Ward, has done a great job this year implementing changes to help address financial needs and increasing coverage within the county. With the help of $25,000 in donations, the sheriff reinstated the K-9 patrol, which was unanimously supported by the Board of Commissioners. That patrol is to be self-funded and will begin with two dogs, but eventually, we hope to include four dogs in total, two for protection and two for drug enforcement activities. A previous board had agreed all marijuana tax revenue was to go to the general fund. This board redirected those funds to the sheriff's office to help address crime. The board also approved a grant from All Care, which enabled the county to continue to partner with the South Coast Inter-Agency Narcotics Team to further the sheriff's crackdown on drugs. In case you are not familiar with John Ward, our county sheriff, I'd like to take this time for him to share a few words with you.
We worked with the Commissioners and the Budget Committee to add five new positions this year, two in patrol, two in corrections, and then we added a records management. We added two more patrol positions. We haven't quite filled them. We were getting close. We have actually ten deputies right now. We have two positions open. But patrol is a different duck, and we have to have the right person for that. Out of those ones that we hired for patrol, I did get hired two detective positions, and that is huge because they handle more of the high-profile cases, all the sex abuse crimes, all the major search warrants we do, maybe if we have a homicide. They are, they do specific type of work, and that's the design for basically a detective to work on and have time to work on. The one thing I'm very proud of is our K-9 program. We used to have a K-9 program back in the late 90s, early 2000s, and the program went away when the sheriff back then decided there were some issues and just did away with the program. But with the amount of drugs this year, or these days, and the amount of crimes related to drugs, we needed to install a new K-9 program. So we did. We got two K-9s. We have a dual-purpose dog. His name's Axel. He's a Belgian Malinois, and he's certified in narcotics and patrol. The other dog is a Labrador Retriever, who is FEMA-certified in search and rescue and cross-certified now in narcotics. This year, with support of our Commissioners, the team search were able to negotiate a pay raise across the board for all our staff. We were, for years, we've been a training ground here in Curry County, and we would hire somebody that would get trained, certified, and then move on because of the pay and better benefits. But we were able to get, I'd like to say, I think it was an 8.4% increase across the board, which brought us up to likewise counties. We have a great group of people here, and I'm very excited about the people we have. Let's say we're almost full, fully staffed, and we're able to provide a little bit better service to our community. I do have a lot of confidence in our Commissioners to help try to find some permanent funding for the county Sheriff's Office and our public safety. Public safety's got to be the number-one priority in our county above all else. That's about all I got to say for this.
The board has spent a considerable amount of time working with other jurisdictions to partner on their services and has seen their staff successfully secure many grants to fund our programs. I feel I can speak on behalf of the board by expressing our gratitude and having talented staff eager to seek resources to help provide the best services they can. The Roads Department asked the board to allocate money to hire a grant writer for their projects, which helped bring in revenue to pay for equipment and repairs. This department has helped save hundreds of thousands of dollars long-term by replacing old, inefficient... old, inefficient equipment with new vehicles and equipment, which can get the work done quicker with less expense and require less maintenance. Some of the equipment replaced was 40 years old. The roadmaster, Rich Christensen, proposed a program whereby the county could get a new fleet of vehicles at a government rate and then sell them in three years at a market rate, thereby reducing our maintenance costs, saving money, and having a reliable fleet of vehicles. Old vehicles are to be auctioned off. Also controversial this past year was the board's decision to not allow county video equipment to be borrowed for free to volunteers without tighter oversight of that equipment. The board also terminated their contract with Brant Media, who was filming our meetings, but only because the county had the option to save approximately half of what we were paying Brant Media. Although Brant did a good job, we felt it necessary to save money wherever we could. As explained, we had some major staffing changes. Overall, staffing was a concern for the county. The county has also had a difficult time attracting qualified building inspectors. So this year, the board entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Josephine County to use one of their interns. Josephine County would pay for the training and education and travel at a cost of $10,000 over three months. This approach allowed us to ensure that we had the right fit for the job, but also saved us about $25,000. As mentioned earlier, we hired a new finance director, the fifth one in four years. She was tasked with ways to improve efficiencies and cut costs, and has proposed several changes that will save money beginning in 2020. Admittedly, some of the strategies we are considering will cost money, but we believe sometimes you have to spend money to save money. Another staffing change we made was to not have a county surveyor on staff, but to contract for the services. There are projected cost savings we expect to see in the coming fiscal year. In fall of 18, the previous board approved a new part-time code enforcement officer. Due to the success of the program, the officer, Dave Fortman, was moved to full-time, and we've made provisions to hire a second officer. In the past year, he has processed 688 cases and had contact with 441 people. The majority of his workload is in the southern part of the county. Most of his cases deal with safety or sanitation issues. Our Juvenile Department has implemented new approaches to juvenile behavior. Wendy Lang, who became the juvenile director in 2018, has these words to share.
What really makes us a great place is the people that work here. The staff here is absolutely amazing. I have an office administrative who does all our legal filing, who keeps us organized, who keeps calendars, and keeps us covering every aspect of the county. We take referrals from Port Orford to Brookings, so we are traveling and we are moving, and we're having to be very resourceful. We have two senior probation officers. They handle the high-end offenders, which would be felony cases, sex offender cases, cases from out of the state and out of the county. They are amazing. Not only do they come here 40 hours a week, they have cell phones on them, which are 24/7, so they go above and beyond what we could ask. Not only that, they are involved in our community. They want Curry County to be a safe place. They, on their free time, coach. They coach volleyball. They coach football. They coach wrestling. They give back to the community in ways that are absolutely amazing. I have a community service coordinator. He takes kids out in the community. The days of putting them in orange and making them walk along the street and pick up garbage, that's no longer what we like to see. We want to teach them skills. Again, we want to teach them to be a productive member of society. So we are landscaping. We are weed-eating. We are mowing. We are giving back to the community for them to take pride in. We recently have taken over the front of the courthouse lawn, and these kids take pride in what they do. If you come by, like right now at the holidays, you're going to see Christmas lights that the kids did. If you come in spring, you're going to see us planting, pulling weeds, doing things like that. In Brookings, we're maintaining a bridge. We're working with ODOT. We're now getting ready to partner with state parks to teach kids how to build trails and build bridges, give them skills that will help them be employable and help them be very successful. So programs that we have done this year, I think that have made a difference is, one of the things we've done is every probation officer has this in their car, and it is strictly a hygiene kit for any kids. We deal with a lot of homeless youth, couch-surfing youth, youth that might not be able to take a shower, so we provide these to kids anytime they need them, not just kids on our caselot, but any case, any kids that we can come around. It's got everything they need from personal items to shampoos, conditioners, toothpaste, you name it, and it comes in a backpack, and it goes to them no questions asked. We also have a grant that we got from Curry Community Health, and this is prevention efforts. This is an instant UA kit with full instructions that a parent can take to the privacy of their own home. They can UA their children and know if there's anything they need to be doing before they get in trouble. So these are at law enforcement agencies, these are at our department, and these are also at schools with the hope that if something is up, a parent can step in before it reaches us and get their child the help they need. This just hit the streets, and this is pretty amazing. This is 21 apps that parents should know about in their child's cellphone. So this gives parents the tools to actually go into the child's cellphone and look and see what those apps are. And if they have the app, just have a good conversation, know what concerns might be and know what's there. Social media is overwhelming our youth, and as parents and community, we really need to be on top of that. And then, I mean, I can't share enough, it's the people, it's the community, it's the caring. The days of, you know, send them to prison and scare them straight aren't there. We are now in a society of teach them, care about them, so we are dedicated to be that one caring person in a kid's life. Again, there's hope behind our doors, and we want to make a difference. The next year, what you're going to see us really focusing on is employment for our youth. We have some partners that have stepped in who offer assistance, so we're really going to work at getting kids employed. Statistics show that they're not out getting in trouble if they're busy working. We also are allowing community service work to be done. Show me that you're employed and working, and I'll count that towards community service work. So those are some of the major things you can look at. Next year, I would say a good read for anybody, not even a good read, a good movie, Antoine Fisher. This is something that my department has entirely watched, and this is about the business we do. This is straight up where one person can make a difference in a young person's life, and that's what the Juvenile Department is dedicated to do.
Other matters we, the Board of County Commissioners, had to address were a request to approve a Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance related to gun control. The board declined to support the proposal since a resolution was passed related to the matter by a previous board and due to concerns from the sheriff's office as well as concerns raised by the public. Two board members went to Washington, DC this year, costing the county about $2,000. The trips were necessary to lobby the federal government for assistance with our river issues as well as the need to address our fires and issues related to sudden oak death. I was one of those members who went to Washington, DC, and I am proud to announce, as a result of my work in Washington, DC and with the National Association of Counties, I was appointed by the president to serve on the National Veterans Military Services Committee. This fall, the board approved a business license ordinance for the unincorporated areas. Some of the revenues from the program pay for the staff to administer the code. Ideally, the new ordinance will help ensure our businesses are up to code, we know what we have here for promotions, and we can be better prepared and provide assistance in the event of a disaster. The board dug into housing issues and declared a housing emergency for Curry County. They sought clarification on a voucher program and proposed codes to make it easier to secure permits and develop properties. These efforts are currently ongoing. The county identified several properties we own and offered them to the Housing Task Force for development of low-to-moderate-income housing. Although no homes have been developed on these sites, we continue to advocate for partnerships to improve the availability and condition of our housing stock. The board offered an amnesty program to encourage people to get their planning and building permits. Unpermitted development is not only unsafe, but our county assessor, Jim Colan, reported the taxes foregone by unpermitted development is costing the county money. He estimated the total assessed value collected for nonpermitted new construction during the last five years was about $14.5 million. As some of you may have noticed, not all county offices are open five days a week, nor are they open even eight hours a day. The board ordered that effective January 1st of this year, all county offices will be open Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There are some exceptions, but our goal is to make sure we are available to you, the citizen. Offices do close for lunch, but are also available by appointment. The county has been operating without some common policies, so we have been reviewing draft policies and enacting them when appropriate. One such policy was a credit card policy where employees would need to be held accountable for transactions on their cards they have access to and limit the number of employees that actually have credit cards. We also supported employees having ID badges so the public knows who staff is when they are in the field. Another matter the board discovered was the county does not engage in asset management. No one is tracking what we own, its age, or preparing a replacement schedule. Software approved in December will help with this deficiency. We created a few committees this year, probably the most significant being the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. Suicides in the United States have increased 4.7% from 2016 to 2017. Oregon is the 26th-largest state, yet our suicide rate is 14th-highest in the nation. That's up 6.4%, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death for our 10- to 34-year-olds, up 8.4%. One-fifth of those who kill themselves are veterans. We discovered employees and committees have not been trained in open meetings or open records laws. Our legal council will be presenting training sessions to them this spring. This board started holding meetings during the summer months in Brookings and Port Orford to make it easier for you, the public, to attend and participate in our meetings. This practice will continue with this current board. Outside of the sheriff's office and some other limited departments, the county was not conducting background checks on their new hires. That policy has now changed, and all hires, including volunteers, must pass a background check. We have also taken some measures to improve courthouse security and accessibility concerns. These changes are required by the state and are still ongoing. Our buildings are very old and in disrepair. This summer, our HVAC system went out without warning and resulted in a major unforeseen expense. Again, there was no capital improvement plan to pay for the new system. It was not budgeted, nor was there a contingency fund. Thankfully, our facilities maintenance director, Eric Hanson, was able to reallocate funds from other projects and find a contractor to install the new HVAC system. That system cost the county $50,000. But shortly after installation, some of the units on the roof of the annex building were stolen. Thankfully, law enforcement was able to recover the materials. Our phone system failed several times, once affecting dispatch, and another resulted in all saved messages being deleted. Our contractor, Kuz Curry Electric, proposed either a full rebuild or a repair. In that no capital improvement planning had been done for the phones, and there was no contingency, the board chose to pursue repairing the old system rather than a new system. We have applied for a loan from the state to fund the repair. In other cost-saving measures, the board discontinued maintaining the tsunami warning sirens that are in the county. Only four of the 17 sirens were working, and Jeremy Duhmire, our Emergency Management Director, has more information about the sirens as well as some other critical information the public should be aware of.
This year, the Board of Commissioners approved, at my request, the discontinuing use of our tsunami sirens. In Curry County, we have so many effective ways to notify citizens, be it the Everbridge Reverse 911 system, the wireless emergency alerts, WIA, system, and our local first responders and law enforcement partners. The tsunami sirens in Curry County were antiquated systems from the World War II era and were in a state of disrepair to the point of being inefficient and ineffective in a disaster Curry County Emergency Management continues to build on its partnerships, both with the local level, the state, federal government, and non-government agencies, entities, and individuals. As we look ahead to 2020, the major projects that Curry County Emergency Management is focusing on is the planning updates, such as the Emergency Operations Plan, the Natural Hazards Mitigations Plan, and the Communications Plan. Those are just three of many plans that my office is responsible for and is engaged in currently in rebuilding. Also continuing to move forward on the Cape Blanco Airport Resiliency Project. Cape Blanco is identified as one of three airports on the coast likely to survive after a Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake, and of the three, it is the only one capable of landing a C-17 airplane with supplies. That airport is a mile-long runway at 230 feet elevation with a landing weight capability of 538,000 pounds. It will be one of our lifelines as we try to recover from a major earthquake. Another project working on is the Rogue Siskiyou Regional Fire and Emergency Training Facility in cooperation with the City of Gold Beach and the Fire Chief Tyson Krieger of Gold Beach. That fire emergency training facility will be located outside of town at the old mill site. It will allow us to have local training for not only our volunteers and agencies, but also to bring others to Curry County for training. It also gives emergency management the ability to have an actual emergency operations center, something we do not currently have in Curry County.
There's been much frustration this past year as the new board realized there has not been proper planning to help meet the ongoing governmental needs. Many critical government practices were not in place. As stated, proper budgeting, asset management, and capital improvement planning are seen as matters that must be and are being addressed immediately. Another area of concern for the board is employee retention. We have very dedicated employees with remarkable integrity. Aside from the cost of living raises, most do not see annual salary increases and are behind in their wages as compared to the private sector and other jurisdictions. This past summer, the board approved a wage study to help determine what the wages should be. That study is to be completed in the next month or so. You may have heard much discussion over our special districts. We have over 40 special districts. The county collects the taxes for those special districts, disperses the funds to them, but cannot charge them for their services. This puts yet another strain on our already poorly funded departments. As you know, the county also has hundreds of foreclosed properties. People have asked why we don't sell those properties. If we sell the properties, the proceeds from them parcels must be divided amongst all the special districts, meaning the county does all the work but only gets approximately 6% of the sale price. We have decided that some of our properties should be donated to at least get them on the tax rolls, and some should be diverted to our Parks Program. How we can address surplus lands is something we are continuing to research. How we can address surplus lands is something we are continuing to research. An ongoing issue we are addressing is the provision of public health services. Several years ago, the county, with the assistance of other nonprofits, funded a costly transition of public health services to Curry Community Health, which at the time was a new nonprofit organization. This fall, CCH told Curry County that in 90 days, they were going to cease providing those services. Since we have a contract with them which requires them to provide public health services until 2021, the county is disputing their decision. It must be clear that although we want CCH to honor their contract, the public health service to our residents is paramount and is our top concern regarding this controversy. The board approved development of the county's first-ever strategic plan. The firm selected was Moss Adams, and the plan is to be completed in the next month. The local Board of Realtors and Kuz Curry Electric helped fund the plan, with the majority of it being funded out of the general fund. Ideally, this plan will help commissioners and departments align their programs and budgets to all go to the same direction and work toward a common goal versus no sound plan or direction to follow. In conclusion, this board is challenged with a lack of funds, and a lack of funding has greatly affected our day-to-day operations. We need to start planning ahead and budgeting for those necessary repairs and operations that, if not addressed, cost us more in the long run. We are doing the best we can and appreciate your continued patience and support. We have antiquated ways of doing business, which we are continually improving. Yes, we will need to spend some money this coming year, but it is imperative we get this county on the right track. If I can ask you for anything today, I would ask you to keep an open mind and trust we are doing the right thing and the best we can. And if you get a chance, please thank your county staff that is often doing multiple jobs at a lower-than-average rate of pay. They are part of this community, our community, and they need to be recognized for their dedication and relentless commitment to work with the board to make Curry County a better place to live. I'd like to thank you for taking time to listen to this important State of the County address. Thank you, and have a great day.
Mr. Gold, do you have anything else you want to?
No, I thought that was well done. We did too long during the year.
I don't think they left anything out.
I don't think so.
I know Commissioner Pash was very adamant about being very transparent on everything that happened, and he had a list that he wanted addressed, and he also wanted to go through the meetings and make sure we highlighted everything that was happening. So I think he did a really good job of letting the public know exactly what the board's been working on.
And Miranda, you did a fantastic job on all those.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I did an disclosure saying I was in November no shape thing, and I got a beard on that.
You look better without the beard. Either way.
So before we adjourn, I just want to clarify on the State of the County address that we are gonna have a link on the county website, and then we'll also have a PDF of the text that was used. So if somebody cannot use YouTube or one of those social media platforms, they'll at least be able to read it as a Word document. And that's all we have.
Council Huddle, anything else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Sheriff. Staff Jesuit.
All good to go. Praise the Miranda play.
Very good. So we are officially adjourned. Thank you all very much.